I knew there was something. This is the best side of my arm.
The best what?
Okay, welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Tuesday, March 29th, 2016. And we're a little scrambled up here. Selectman Daly is back from surgery, so we welcome her back. We'll see how long she lasts.
Good to be here.
So if folks see her leave, it's not because she's being rude, but because she needs to. Okay. And I'll just have to remember that I have to look to my right when we start voting. And that's going to be tough. So first item on the agenda is announcements. Sunday evening is an event to honor Bob Spurber. Dr. Bob Spurber was the Superintendent of Schools here in Brookline from like 1964 to the early 1980s, and he's been active in town government and the wider world at BU, City of Chelsea. He's done all kinds of very interesting and exciting things, and this event is honoring his years of service, so everyone's invited. It would help if you're interested in the event. It's being held at the Teen Center, 4:30 on Sunday, and it would help if you RSVP.
I think there is a small admission charge to help Bob. He wants to put his memoirs together.
Right. Donations are being sought.
Oh, okay.
They're not required, but they're suggested. And if, BrooklineTeenCenter.org/BobSpurber, I believe, is the address to RSVP, and you can even make a little donation online, or bring a check, or not bring a check, but hopefully bring a check.
Yeah, and this Saturday, the Brookline Education Foundation is having their fundraiser. Is that Saturday, the second?
Yes, yes.
And I don't know if there's any tickets available still or not, but it is a wonderful organization, and they provide a lot of money for teachers to do special projects and research that they might not otherwise be able to do.
Right.
Continuing the theme of events this weekend, on Sunday, Walk a Mile in Her Shoes is going on. This is the second annual event to bring awareness to domestic violence, from 1:00 to 3:00, sort of starting and ending at the Garden of Remembrance, right behind the Department of Public Health, again on Sunday, April 3rd. This Saturday is the Rotary's Pancake Breakfast. It's always a good event to see your neighbors and elected officials, and just generally catch up on the gossip and doings in town. So that's Saturday morning. I believe it starts at 8:00 and goes until noon. High School Cafeteria is the location.
Yeah, and a few years ago, they did begin using real maple syrup with those pancakes, so definitely worth going there for breakfast.
I will be there, so if you want to buttonhole me, you can, you know where I'm going to be on Saturday morning?
Yeah, I'll be there, too.
And then my final reminder is it's Climate Change Week in Brookline. I will turn it over to Selectman Heller, I think I stole her thunder on that one.
It starts off on Saturday with a bang. Actually, there's a...
I think it's already started, hasn't it? They're having some speeches.
Competition for children to present projects on climate action on Saturday, and it should be fun. There are many activities during the whole, it's actually happening this week. There is, every night, in fact, there's some activity, and you can find it on our website, BrooklineMA.gov. I think all of the activities for Climate Week are listed. I also wanted to mention that next week is National Health Week, and that starts off on Saturday with a offering from the Longwood Dental Group for free dental care to the first 100 people who show up. It starts at 7:30 in the morning at their office on 1842 Beacon Street. So it's their day, they call it their day to give back to the community. And then the rest of the week, also, there are, all the activities for National Health Week are online, also, under the Health Department. There's some fun activities, Girls Night Out on Monday, I think that's pretty well subscribed to already, and many other fun-looking activities, as well as interesting, so I hope you'll check it out.
But to go back to the climate action for a minute, I think sometime on Saturday, and maybe you can tell me exactly when, they're taking the Styrofoam, which I have carefully been saving my Styrofoam all year long, and where do I bring it, and what time can I get rid of it?
Actually, I believe, they've always done it in the Town Hall parking lot, and it's, I believe, starts, I'd have to check the time online, but I believe it starts at 8:00 in the morning. And they have contracted with the group to collect it, and the last time, I remember that we saw some of the products that came from this stuff, combs, some other items that you use around your house all the time, some plastic cutlery. So there are companies who will take it and use it. It's not terribly efficient, because there are so few places that actually do recycle the stuff.
Yeah, and many people think you can put that in your recycling bin, but it's, they don't, that's not appropriate for your recycling bin, so this is really the best place to get rid of your Styrofoam.
Right, we do not collect it. It's number six. There's a couple of different forms of polystyrene. One is the clear rigid stuff, which we do accept in our bins, but the Styrofoam-type product, we do not. It's also important, a lot of grocery stores, including, I believe, Trader Joe's, and I think Stop &amp; Shop now does it, some places, and Star, and Whole Foods certainly does, they use cellulose product on their meat trays instead of Styrofoam. And it looks very much like Styrofoam. A lot of times, it's pink or blue, and that stuff does not get recycled. It's actually made from plant products, and it's not recyclable in the same way. Usually, it's compostable and a very high-efficient, highly efficient composting system, not your backyard, i.e., but, so you just say no, don't bring that stuff on Saturday.
So to Selectman Daly's question about where she brings her Styrofoam, it's the 3R Depot event. It starts at 10:00 a.m., 10:00 to 2:00. It's listed as in and around Town Hall.
So probably the parking lot, like they did in the past, probably. Anything else? Selectman Green.
Yeah, I just want to let everyone know that I had the privilege of attending a police biased training session today out at Pine Manor College, which in light of all the issues that are in the news around, from around the country, was very timely. Not because, you know, we have some of these problems, because, you know, I think our police department is really cutting-edge in terms of addressing many of these issues, but because, you know, bias is almost a natural component of our lives and our perception of, you know, the outside world. And the training was, you know, it was labeled biased training, not just race, but sort of bias as part of human nature. And I thought it was very, very helpful in terms of understanding how the police department here in Brookline and in many communities across the country are really addressing this implicit bias that people have that affects how they interact with the public in policing situations. So it was very, very helpful for me. I appreciate the fact that the police chief allowed me to attend this. I asked him to send me a copy of the slides that were used in the presentations, and I'd like to distribute them to the board, because, you know, it's not a substitute for attending the training in any way, but it does give you a sense of some of the issues that are recognized as issues that must be addressed through training as well as other means. And I might add, I was told by a number of the participating officers that they really appreciated the fact that I showed up and attended with them. I think we need to remember that in terms of, you know, when we interact with, you know, town employees generally. It's always appreciated when a selectman is out there in public with them. I think it was appreciated today, and I think, you know, it's always appreciated when we make ourselves our presence, you know, or, what am I trying to say, when we attend these types of events.
Also makes a statement that we think it's important.
Right, that we think it's important, that, you know, we're willing to listen, I mean, not, you know, we necessarily are going to, you know, agree with everything that may be happening with respect to the police department or anything else, but we're willing to listen and learn, you know, what are the two sides of issues that, you know, come into our meetings and, you know, yell at us.
Anything else? Okay, we can move on to public comment.
Thank you very much for having me. I'm Joanna Baker. I'm a town meeting member of Precinct 13. I'm a member appointed by the Board of Selectmen on the MLK Celebration Committee. I'm a resident of Beacon Street with my husband and my cute dog, and, but I'm here today as a citizen, and I'm really here with a citizen's interest, because I serve on the MLK Celebration Committee, which is chaired by Selectman Green. I have become privileged to know a teacher at BHS, who's also a BHS parent and a BHS alum, Malcolm Cawthorn, Mr. Cawthorn to the high school students, a social studies teacher. And because I interact with Malcolm regularly at the MLK Celebration Committee, I have no high school students, I have no K through 12, eight students, I get to know something about what goes on at BHS. And I'm very grateful for that intersection of kind of town affairs and school affairs. So I was told, our committee was told by Malcolm, that the high school does this one day of courageous conversations, and it was March 17th, and two years ago, I believe, parents of BHS students wanted to have some guidance on how to talk about race with their high school students. So the BHS 21st Century Fund started to put together programming in the evening, and it's open to everybody. You don't have to be a parent. You don't ever have to have been a parent or have attended BHS, but there was a wonderful panel, a tremendous performance, a repeat of a performance we had on MLK Day. Hannah Timmerman opened the event beautifully, and a half dozen or so BHS students told their stories on videotape about what it's like to be a person in Brookline, perhaps a person of color, a person who is unique, but sometimes treated in a way that doesn't make them feel like they're fully human. And I don't want to speak for the kids, but it's a really worthwhile video, and it's supposed to be on the Brookline Interactive Group website right now. That's the March 17th event. And I'm here today to thank Mr. Kleckner, because he so kindly directed the staff of the IT Department to put the poster about What's the Big Idea, session two of the BHS 21st Century Fund, three-program series, and because I'm not an organizer of this, I have to read it. It's called What's the Big Idea, this year on race and community, seeing the world through different lenses. So we had student voices on the first event in March. This next event is a week from last night, Monday, April 4th, at 7:00 p.m. at the BHS Auditorium. Continuing What's the Big Idea Forum on Race and Community will be Racial Equity in Education. So speakers include Susan Neymar, consultant and author of The Education of a White Parent, and Manav Thakur, forgive me if I got your name wrong, Associate Director at the Intersection Institute for Social Change. So the program is at BHS Auditorium, 115 Greeno Street, starts at 7:00 p.m. It is free. They would like to know how many people are coming. So the web address to go to to sign up is either www.bhs21stcenturyfund.org, or if that's too much of a mouthful, go to the Brookline, Town of Brookline website, and the very top thing you'll see is the poster for this event. I encourage people to go. It's a worthwhile conversation, and exactly one month from April 4th, on May 4th, is the summary event. And I'm especially here to invite our Board of Selectmen, the Town Administrator, Department Heads, all to come to watch what happened in March, come next week, and come to the May 4th event, because it's the first chance through this series of three events to really interact, as opposed to listen to a panel, and so it's going to be set up for successful interaction. And, you know, we have to learn to listen with respect, and learn to open our minds and open our hearts, and find out there's things we don't know, and grow and move forward together. So I'm grateful to the volunteers who serve on the 21st Century Fund, the Brookline Metco Program, the folks at Brookline Interactive Group, BHS faculty, Steps to Success, and the BHS PTO. Many hard-working people have conceived of and put this together, and I think we should all take advantage of it. Thank you for the time.
So April 4th is the next one, and the one after that is May 4th.
May 4th, the day after the town election.
Thank you.
But I think we're being asked to register for the April 4th event. I've registered, and I look forward to that. Unfortunately, I was not able to make the 17th, but I think it's important to, you know, be aware of what's going on in the minds of students at the high school, because sometimes they have some insights that us adults have sort of missed or forgotten about.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Baker. Okay, now moving on to our regular business. First is the minutes of March 22nd.
I had some changes.
Yeah, I had some changes. I know Selectman Green had some changes.
I had some changes as well.
So I will move acceptance of the, what was the date? March 22nd, minutes. As amended, all those in favor, Selectman Daly?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the chair of votes, aye. And next item is the question of accepting a donation in the amount of $100 from Jane and Mario Tavallieri to be used in connection with the Town Hall Walls program. Mr. Faison?
Good evening. Austin Faison, Assistant Town Administrator.
Relaxing it, Neil, not you.
It's not a problem.
You give him another six months, and he's going to get your name right.
It's okay, we got time. Another donation for Town Hall Walls from Jane and Mario Tavallieri. Two of those pieces of art right over there are by her daughter, the Darth Vader and the Tom Brady, maybe the David Ortiz, too. Oh, all of them. Very good artists, but in appreciation for the fact that we displayed some of her art, they wanted to make a donation to Town Hall Walls.
Okay.
That's great.
Yeah, that's great, and glad to see the art, and want to thank...
Yeah, it's always fun to see the changing landscape.
Yeah.
Maybe we should clue people in on what the Town Hall Walls program is.
Go to it.
So I will do my best to stay honest. So it's a program that takes otherwise blank spaces in Town Hall and displays art from community members in it.
It's run by the Arts Commission.
Arts Commission, on a rotating basis, so every few months, there's a new exhibition.
So if people are artists, that's, they should contact the Arts Commission if they want to get in on some of this.
Absolutely.
Right, and there's usually artwork in the lobby and in Room 103 downstairs.
103, 111, and then up here on the sixth floor.
Right, yeah. So, okay, so I'll move that we accept the donation, the amount of $100, from Jane and Mario Tavallieri, to be used in connection with the Town Hall Walls program. All those in favor, Selectman Daly?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
And Selectman Green?
Aye.
Chair of votes, aye.
Thank you.
And we have a couple of temporary alcohol licenses, and the police department has reviewed them and sees no reason to deny them, so I will move them in omnibus fashion. So I will move that we grant a temporary wine and malt beverage license to Boston University in connection with a reception to be held on April 2nd from 8:00 p.m. to 11:00 at 808 Commonwealth Avenue. And I will also move that we grant a temporary all kinds alcoholic beverage license to the Brookline Education Foundation in connection with the 35th Gala Anniversary, to be held on April 2nd from 6:00 to midnight at the Lincoln School, 29 Kennard Road, and that's the event that Selectman Daly was telling us about that I'll be attending.
Me, too.
And Selectman Daly, and perhaps some of my other colleagues. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daly?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the chair of votes, aye. Okay, are we ready to talk about Porch Fest? Okay, members of the Arts Brookline, Brookline Music School will appear to update the board on Brookline Porch Fest.
We are little people. You see, it's our way. So I'm Gillian Jackson, Administrator for Arts Brookline, and also the Brookline Arts Commission.
And I'm Betsy Fraunfeld, the Executive Director of Brookline Music School.
Okay, welcome.
So I know we only have a short time allocated for this, so I don't know if you think it's better you ask us questions based on...
Why don't you tell us what's going on and what this is about, and...
Okay, well, Porch Fest is tentatively scheduled for June 4th. It's going to involve porches throughout town, who will host musicians, so it's basically a community music event. We're hoping that it will culminate, because it's the same day as the Coolidge Corner Arts Festival, so we're hoping that the music will kind of end up at the Arts Festival.
So this is going to be June 4th, Saturday, June 4th.
June 4th, Saturday, June 4th, probably from 12 till 6.
And it'll be on both residential and commercial porches, first floor or lower, so it could be on somebody's front yard if you wanted, but nothing above that.
So are you seeking porches?
We are currently seeking porches, musicians, and volunteers, because at each porch, there will be a porch fund manager who makes sure that everything is running smoothly.
And if someone wants to volunteer a porch, or their services as a musician, what do they do?
They email porchfest@bmsmusic.org, or there is a phone number, which I haven't memorized yet, that you can call.
It's 617-383-4321.
Thank you.
Oh, that's right, it's on the postcard that we attached to this.
All right. And the deadline is April 26th for signing up porches and musicians. Volunteers can sign up anytime.
Whenever.
So this is modeled after an event that occurred in Jamaica Plain?
Yeah. So we've met with the people who organized that, a lot of emails going back and forth, you know, because we wanted to know how the security operated, insurance, that kind of thing, and they were very, very helpful. So much of that is included in the package we gave you.
Porch Fest is actually sort of this growing concept across the country, across the world. There's a Porch Fest International Facebook page, for those of you who have Facebook, you can go on to. And so in, around here, there's one in Somerville, I think Arlington's starting one, Roselandale's had one. It's just hopefully a nice sunny day where people go outside and enjoy music around the...
Hopefully it'll be sunny. Keep your fingers crossed. So you're, do you have a target number of porches you're looking for?
We're saying 30 to 50 for the first year.
Wow.
JP is going on their third year, and in their second year, they had 133, so...
Wow.
You know, people can volunteer a porch, they can volunteer a porch with their own music, if they happen to be a band and a porch. We'll do the matching of those that have just one or the other.
And do you have target streets, or is it going to, how wide a net are you trying to cast for porches?
That really depends on where the volunteers come from. I think ideally, we'd like to create a ribbon of music down Harvard Street from the village through to Coolidge Corner, but we'll really see where the volunteers come from at best point.
Yeah, there aren't a lot of porches on Harvard Street.
Oh, not on Harvard Streets, streets of Harvard Street.
And the Music School will have its front porch, because it's back porch, you have to look at, like that, from 12 to 2 on that day. We've had a couple people sort of up towards Washington Square who volunteered their porches.
Okay, so you're not just targeting Coolidge Corner?
No.
Okay.
For fear of, you know, people feeling a little...
Left out.
Excluded.
But the reality is, that's probably where most of the porch is at.
Right.
Well, I actually know a woman on Martha's Vineyard who regularly has Irish musicians come to her front porch, and everybody walking down the street stops and listens for a while, and it's really, really kind of fun. So I think this will be very interesting.
Hopefully.
Yeah, this sounds really interesting. Any questions, comments?
What type of issues have the Jamaica Plain people indicated present themselves with such events, like noise, you know, neighbors who don't want, you know, music around, I mean, whatever?
They haven't talked so much about the noise and the neighbors, because they think...
Generally, what types of...
Right, but what they did talk about was trying to minimize traffic, so they encouraged people to walk or ride their bikes, and then they had the, what do they call it, the cabs, the road bikes?
Oh, the pedicabs.
Around town to move people, because they were using a bigger area than we're anticipating in the first year. So that was one thing, making sure that you use low porches, and if you don't have people on third-floor porches blasting music. And then by having these managers at each porch to make sure all the neighbors are happy and people aren't tromping on somebody else's flowers or really blasting. In all the materials that we're sending out, there's going to be information for the musicians about being reasonable in terms of amps and how loud they put their music, but the goal is that no one group would probably play for more than two hours, so no one will be disturbed for too long, and it is between 12 and 6, so hopefully, most people other than college students are up by noon and happy by 6.
I see you have insurance. I assume that you are banning pyrotechnics.
I think so, yeah, we didn't, we didn't take that part. But I think JP, they did say that they really pushed with the porch people, that they should, you know, keep their neighbors involved with it, invite them, let them know what's going on, you know, so they don't just wake up one Saturday morning to music on the neighbor's porch, so that, they said that was a very important...
You can get cranky neighbors. My daughter lived in a house in Brighton with a whole bunch of musicians, and they were all pretty good musicians, too, and yet their neighbors would regularly call the police whenever they started playing any music, so...
But this is a one-shot deal, though.
We do have one question, actually, about the insurance, so we're getting just, you know, an event policy, and we've been told by Mel that we should name all of you on our policy, and I guess...
If you want to be.
If you want to be, but my question is, from a logistical point of view, is that as individual, do we put your individual names, or do we put the town...
As additional insurance... As additional insured?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, yeah, we can iron that out with town council.
Okay.
Yeah, you don't need to name anybody individually, the town itself.
Can I ask one other question?
Go for it.
I'm chairman of the bottled water committee in Brookline, and our goal is to reduce the use of bottled water and other plastic containers around town. I would suggest that you, you know, come up with some ideas to provide hydration facilities at at least some of these locations where there'll be large crowds of people. For example, MWRA has a hydration cart that they can lend out, I'm sure there are other options, but, you know, I mean, that would, I think that would be a good, you know, thing to do, especially in an event that's going to be, you know, probably pretty crowded in a relatively warm time of the year. Yeah, right.
Yeah, we'll definitely do that. And I encourage people to carry their own water bottles, too.
And also figure out where they can fill them up, I mean, you know, stores, you know, I don't know where else, so...
Okay, thank you. And just one, how are you planning on publicizing this?
Postcards, social media. The Tap are hoping to do an article on it.
Done, already we've done some email blasts, so the more, you know, suggesting people pass it on to as many people as they know, so that...
Yeah, I'd suggest you try to get into the school, you know, most of them have a sheet that I think, I think mostly they're emailed home now, but goes home to the parents, you know?
Oh, the newsletter.
Yeah.
Those that went out in our email blast.
And neighborhood associations, particularly in the area surrounding where you're targeting is a good, a good way to get at people.
Yeah, we really didn't want to get it out there too much until we'd spoke to you all.
Right. And then as, well, there's kind of two phases. One is soliciting the porches and musicians, and then there's the phase closest, closest to the event, trying to get people to actually show up.
Show up, yeah. Yeah, we have a couple of kiosks, but, so we will definitely get the word out.
Okay.
And also there'll be some cross promotion with the Arts Festival. So, you know, we'll promote them and hopefully they'll promote us.
Cool.
Perfect.
Well, it sounds, it sounds exciting.
Are there any permits that are required to obtain?
I don't think so. I think it's all on private property, as I understand.
Yeah, yeah, it's all on private property.
We can probably help with that. Those of you who know.
We do permit the Arts Festival itself, and the school department is involved as well, but I didn't see any specific permits required for Porch Fest.
When was the library, though, just, I mean, but I assume they just worked that out with the library, right?
Library trustees, you know, maintains their property. You'd have to get their permission for anything on their property.
Yeah, yeah, well, I think it's coming from, from them, but they'd like to...
Planning to hold anything at any of the schools?
We hadn't really...
I don't know.
Not, unless you think that'll be...
Well, if you're on Harvard Street, you might want to think about Devotion, what peers...
Oh, well, so actually, at Devotion, because the Arts Festival is there, they're trying to add some new aspects to their festival, and they have asked for music from 3:00 to 6:00 as part of Porch Fest, to add some zazz, I guess, to the Arts Festival.
Get you to work with the school department on the, on using the...
Well, I think the Coolidge Corner Arts Festival have, have worked that out with the school department.
Great, well, it sounds very fun.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the question of adopting a resolution honoring our Finance Director, Stephen Cirillo, for his 20 years of outstanding and dedicated service to the town of Brookline. And for those of you in our television audience, Mr. Cirillo is one of, in my view, one of the real bedrock pillars of our financial strategy and has been a key factor in our success as a town and our AAA bond rating and, you know, Mr. Cirillo is retiring.
I told him not to do it, but he's doing it anyway.
And he's going to be missed.
I think, Steve, in addition to the things you mentioned, really got us launched on our long-term planning efforts as well in the financial arena. And, you know, we are now a model for many other communities, due, in large part, to his work, so he's contributed tremendously, I think, to the town of Brookline.
To dovetail on that point, not only did he get us launched on a series of policies of financial discipline, but he was able to convey the information and what the policy said in such a way that we all understood what was going on, which is integral to making sure that you follow the policies. So my compliments to him for that and my best wishes, I guess, on his onward career, his onward life.
I worked with Steve a lot as chairman of the Audit Committee, and I will have to say, he did have to explain to me several times how the, the, the people that come in and look at our liabilities, our long-term liabilities, you know, the actuaries, how they come to the conclusions they come to before, before it started to seep in, but...
So, anyone else wish to add anything? So I, it's a long resolution which kind of goes through in more detail the points we made, so I'm, I'm just going to move that we adopt it, and then there's going to be an event honoring Steve this Friday, starting at 11:30, is it?
No, I missed nine thirty.
9:30, oh, I would have missed it.
9:30 to 11:00.
9:30 to 11:00, and where's it going to be?
Here in Town Hall, let me just...
Room 103, I believe.
Okay, so Friday morning, 9:30, and at which time the resolution will be read. So I'll therefore move that we adopt the resolution honoring Steve Cirillo. All those in favor, please say aye. Sleckman Daley.
Aye.
Sleckman Franco.
Aye.
Sleckman Heller.
Aye.
Sleckman Green.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And now we have a couple of items about Mr. Cirillo's replacement, so I'll turn it over to Mr. Klechner.
Not wasting any time.
Right.
Well, actually, we've let some time go by, and so, you know, it's, it's important to move expeditiously, and I think we're doing that at this point. So let me just say that, you know, I'll, I'll hold some of my comments for Friday at Steve's event, but all the things that have been said are so true, and it's, Steve has been really an integral part of the management team here and really is the face of our financial management, which contributes to our AAA bond rating, and so he will be greatly missed. But as always, retirements bring other opportunities for the town, and we are very aggressively recruiting for a replacement for Steve. In Brookline, in the Finance Department that's created by a special act, the Finance Director can also, may also serve as one of the division heads. So our divisions include Treasury, the accounting, which is the controller, procurement, and also assessing. And it has been the tradition, or at least Steve and his predecessor both served as the treasurer collector, so that's, we expect that's how we've advertised the position, but it's not essential, you know, if, things could change, I suppose, but right now the default is, is the treasurer collector in addition to the Finance Director. And so during the transition, when Steve, after Steve leaves, it's not my intent to fill immediately in an acting capacity the Finance Director, but it is important to fill the treasurer and collector position. And it is my recommendation, and I will ask the board to approve the appointment of Deborah Mann, who is currently the acting treasurer collector to serve in a interim treasurer collector capacity. I've spoken to Debbie, she's, she's been here a long time, she really understands how the treasurer collector's office works. She always serves in Steve's absence, and so she's well-equipped to, to be appointed in that capacity. I've also met with all of the other division heads and explained this process, what we're going through, and indicated that we are not going to appoint a Finance Director, an interim Finance Director, and that in the event that they do require any intervention or guidance, my office, including myself, or Melissa, or Austin can support that. So I think we'll be very well-served for the next few weeks. I also will be appointing a search committee, a search panel, that will help me identify a candidate, because it is ultimately your appointment, but I'm obligated to give you a recommendation, which, which I will do. So at this point, I guess under, under B is really probably the first thing you should act. I've already advertised the position, so I'm sure, hoping that you will authorize me to fill the, fill the vacancy, and if you do so, then I'd like you to act on the appointment of Deborah Mann as the acting treasurer collector, please.
Okay, any discussion, comments?
Yeah, I'd just like to make my normal comment, that, you know, Finance Director is a position where there are a significant number, I mean, not a huge number, but significant number of Black and Hispanic potential candidates out there. I think we just need to be able to make sure that we reach them, so that the pool of people we look at is sufficiently diverse. Not saying that, you know, that, you know, any one particular person be selected, but we need to make sure that we reach out to who's out there, and I think there are more Finance Director-type candidates than there are for some other positions, so we should take advantage of that.
Well, I totally agree, Sleckman Green, and also I want you to know that we're experimenting with this recruitment to, to use a consulting group called the Professional Diversity Network, and we hope that in addition to just advertising in certain places where minority affinity groups are, tend to, tend to look, we want to do some more targeted outreach. So we're interested in seeing what the Professional Diversity Network can do for us. It's the first time we've used them in this, in this capacity.
And I understand that there's been thus far a large response to the posting, that people are expressing interest, and I don't know what the makeup of the pool is, but, but people are at least seeing the advertisement, and that's a good first step.
Yeah, I think, I think the town of Brookline is well-regarded, the AAA bond rating certainly helps. I, I talk about the AAA bond rating as being a positive for the town for a lot of reasons, not just saving money on interest costs, but it, it tells the outside world that we're serious about strong financial management, and so I think that alone really gives us a shot in the arm for this recruitment.
Okay, so therefore I'll move that we authorize the filling of a vacancy in the position of Director of Finance. All those in favor, please say aye. Sleckman Daley.
Aye.
Sleckman Franco.
Aye.
Sleckman Heller.
Aye.
Sleckman Green.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
And I think we, did we vote for Deborah Mann?
That's the next step.
Oh, okay.
I will move that we appoint Deborah Mann as acting treasurer collector. All those in favor, please say aye. Sleckman Daley.
Aye.
Sleckman Franco.
Aye.
Sleckman Heller.
Aye.
Sleckman Green.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Okay, and we have another opening in the Treasury...
Can I, can I ask a question?
Yep.
Could you, I don't see in her, in the package Deborah Mann's resume. Could you circulate that, just so we know who she is?
Certainly, I will.
No more.
Yes. With respect to this item, I wasn't about to ask Steve to come again to a meeting to do that, so the Assistant Town Administrator, Austin Faison, will do that this evening. I'm back.
I have phonetically spelled out your names.
See, right here.
Me also.
Faison.
Yeah.
I look forward to looking how that is spelled out.
That's what it says.
Okay. So there is currently an open position in the Finance Department, the Senior Office Assistant, and that position, the current employee left to go to Dedham, and we would like to get it filled as quickly as possible.
Any questions, comments?
Explain to me what the Senior Office Assistant does. I mean, I apologize for not knowing this, but I don't.
Sure. So there's actually a window downstairs at the treasurer's office, almost like a Arm V type of window, where people can interact about tax bills and things like that.
I'm one of those people who comes in at the last possible moment with my tax, my quarterly tax bill.
And the answer is, Green is right in front.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Let me take this opportunity to remind people that their excise tax bill is due on Friday. But yeah, they would, they would work at the window and process some of the things, and then eventually move on to liens and excise tax and things like that.
Okay, any other questions, Sleckman Green? Nope. Okay, thank you. Other than why I didn't read this carefully? I will therefore move that we authorize the filling of a Senior Office Assistant in the Treasury Department. All those in favor, please say aye. Sleckman Daley.
Aye.
Sleckman Franco.
Aye.
Sleckman Heller.
Aye.
Sleckman Green.
Aye.
And chair votes aye.
And I think I speak for all my colleagues when I urge you to cast the widest net possible and work with Dr. Jalen Owen, Sandra DeBeau, Ms. DeBeau, to get a diverse applicant pool. I will pass that along to Sandra.
Thank you, Ben. After, after my previous failure to read this material, I was embarrassed to say anything more, so...
I've got, I've got your back, Bernard.
Thank you.
We have to have a little levity up here, you know?
Yeah.
Okay, next item is the question of authorizing the filling of a senior planner in the position, of the senior planning position in the Planning Department. I got it kind of right.
Good enough. Alison Steinfeld, Planning Director. Laura Curtis Hayes, who is our senior planner within the Regulatory Division, has submitted her resignation effective April 8th. Laura's been an invaluable member of the department for almost 10 years. Just to make note of one of her most recent and final actions was she just prepared and submitted a quarter of a million dollar application to Green Communities for a grant to help us incorporate LED lighting into Emerald Necklace and to upgrade our lighting in Driscoll, the Senior Center and the Elliott Rec Center to LEDs. If we're successful, that will save the town more than $16,000 a year. So in light of the fact that Laura will be resigning a week from Friday, I'm respectfully requesting that you authorize me to fill the position.
I've, I've worked with Laura for, for a number of years.
Yeah, I have also, and I want to say she's, she was always very on top of things, very efficient. I'm, please tell her we're sorry to see her go. The challenge to get someone equally, equally qualified.
I've been working with her since I came onto the board and was appointed the co-chair of the Selectmen's Climate Action Committee, and she is, she's terrific. Both Deborah Rivers and I, who are the, the co-chairs of that committee, are going to feel her loss significantly. She's very professional, she's on top of her job, she really interacts with people in very positive ways. So I, I was very distressed to see her, to see her leaving, and she's, she's very clear about the fact that she's doing this for family reasons. She has a young child at home and juggling full-time work responsibilities and night meetings, when your spouse also has a full-time job is, is tough, and many of us know that. But still and all, I think it's, it's a, it's a loss for the town, there's no question about that. And I spoke to Laura today and conveyed that to her, so...
Thank you.
So I, I'll move that we fill the position of Senior Planning Planner in the Planning Division of, it says the Planning Division, of the Planning Community Development Department. Okay, all those in favor of my bungled motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Sleckman Daley. Sleckman Franco.
Aye.
Sleckman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we're ready now to start talking budgets, and I see Mr. Jellino here, so we'll take you first. And we'll be talking about the Office of Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations.
Good evening. I'm actually quite happy to be presenting here this evening. As you're aware, as of November, our office was in existence for one year, and as of January, the Commission actually started as well. We've accomplished a lot this year, and I'm going to go through some of the highlights for you. In fact, I should start with the one that's actually, well, happened on Sunday, this Sunday, the Walk a Mile Event for Domestic Violence and Sexual Assault Awareness Prevention is happening this Sunday. We're not anticipating a large crowd, but I think we are anticipating a nice crowd, and we're actually walking down Harvard Street this year as opposed to school, so we'll be more of a spectacle, and a lot of people walking with red shoes on. One of the things that—
What size do you wear, Lloyd?
Size 10 and 1/2. I don't think I'll be walking this year, though. Yeah, I'll be rooting folks on.
I won't either, although I walked last year, and I suffered for weeks.
That's how women feel all the time.
I feel your pain, but only for so long.
This year, actually, I stepped down as the Chair of Domestic Violence Roundtable. Actually, turned the baton over to Melissa O'Brien for Steps to Success. Our office still collaborates with them strongly on different events and stuff, including, you know, a couple of programs at BIG, where you had the Blue Ribbon Event, et cetera. And so we're still very much involved with that. We also participate with the Thrive Guide, which the Women's Commission and Brookline Community Center and Brookline Community Foundation, all of us collaborated on this online resource guide. And one of the focus was to making sure it was user-friendly, because you can have a lot of information, and if it's so overwhelming, you won't use it. So we decided to work with BIG to actually more, to make it user-friendly, and it's, I think it's about ready to launch, so you can expect that sometime this month. One of the focus of our office is actually to actually, I call, positive programming. As you know, Brookline has been subjected to, you know, a lot of issues that are going on in the town, and the message I want to get is Brookline is a positive place. We welcome diversity and inclusion, and, you know, we'll promote that as much as we can, and in circumstances where it's not happening or it's being prevented, we take action. That being said, I believe 90% of the work from our office is actually positive programming. And the way we go about doing that is actually attaching ourselves to or supporting efforts that are already out there. If you noticed, I actually, the people who know music, I actually got her business card. And Selectperson Daley, you suggested, you said something about Irish music, so it clicked in my head, that's something that we can actually use to promote cultural, you know, exchange and community. So we look for ideas like this. We call it passive learning, too. You notice downstairs, not just with the age-friendly exhibit that's down there, we actually help with that with the Age Friendly Committee, but on the other side, there is what you call the Cultural Corner. This month was Women's, National Women's Month, History's Month, and you notice there's significant people who identify as being women out there. You notice some of the phrasing that I'm using. We're trying to get to gender-free language, or, you know, not make assumptions. And again, you would, one of the things that the Commission was charged with this year was sort of looking at the bylaws and actually getting, making sure that it's gender-free. So all these things are really subtle, but they make a big difference. I can list a lot of things that we do, and I just want to give a shout-out to Chris, and Nathan, Katrina, and Labanya in my office, who do a lot of work. We're staff of two full-time people and one part-time person and two interns, and they work, I don't know if they work over hours, they're very competent people, and they get a lot done, and—
Yeah, I wanted to say, Chris Chania-Sulket has been a very enthusiastic member of our Brookline as an Age Friendly Community Committee, and we appreciate her help on all of our efforts.
Yes. And I particularly enjoy working with all the board of select people. Selectman Heller, I haven't had an opportunity to work with you, but I'm looking forward to it, so.
Let me straighten up a little bit here.
So I mean, I want to talk a little bit about the ADA component of the position, because that's where I think that my department is, we should heighten our performance a little bit, and it's just a lack of capacity at this point. And I'm looking forward to actually having someone come on the Board who has expertise in ADA, and actually can do some of the work that we're behind in. I think most of our buildings are fairly current, but there's new technologies, new adaptations that we can actually utilize, and having someone to come in and monitor that and make suggestions to the Commission for the Disabled and my office would be very helpful. So that's one of the priorities I have for this year, is to make sure that we're up to speed with that.
I had a couple of questions.
Go for it.
I noticed on your performance workload indicators, there was a number of fire-fund referrals, and there was 20, which was over your estimate. What is the fire-fund referrals?
If you remember the Beacon Street Fire some years ago, there was a nice campaign from the firefighters and the community to generate funds to help people, you know, who were displaced in the fire. We continue that. We actually have a relationship with Brooklyn Community Foundation where, if there's a fire or such, and I don't recall the exact fire, but it was, in fact, that wasn't a fire, that was actually the hailstorm. And so what we do is, we do outreach to the folks to see what their needs are, and then we contact Brooklyn Community Foundation, and we coordinate efforts to either get them safety net funds, or we get direct funds from Brooklyn Community Foundation to get to the folks.
Okay. And the other thing you mentioned was ramp program requests.
Yes.
What is that?
Through the Commission for the Disabled, we have two different ramps, excuse me, four ramps, two different sizes, large and two small ones. For folks who need access to buildings that have a lift or a step, that, and they're not, they don't need to be up to code, they're current ADA standards, we run those things out, we run the ramps out.
In your accomplishments for the soon-to-conclude fiscal year, you make note of converting past EEO4 data from paper logs into an electronic format to simplify tabulation and research.
Yes.
What are EEO4, or what is an EEO4 data, and what type of research and tabulation are we doing?
Okay. The EEO4 does equal opportunity data that we're required to provide to the federal government. It's tabulated every two years, and I get it from Sandra. We get it in paper form, and so it's really hard to manipulate the data, so I had staff actually put it in the database. Part of that, though, is stratified, in terms of what positions people are going in based on race and other descriptive factors. And so right now, we have it in a way that we can actually do data analysis, we can write in code and get any information that we want, with that a little bit of a caveat. What you get out is what you get in, so the data is not necessarily 100% accurate.
And what do we do with that data besides sending it to the federal government? Does it find its way into town reports, or do you publicize it in any other way?
I send out the report to the Commission, and, you know, and they can ask if they want to run a report or not. They haven't asked me, but what I would do each year going forward, actually, because I have a solid, 2015, we have good data, we can actually start doing analysis and compare it to the census that was part of the warrant article last year.
So I note the budget is, it's a level-funded budget, with a small increase due to step increases and stuff like that.
Let me circle back and ask one, what I, maybe will be concluding question. You made mention at the beginning of your presentation that this is sort of your first anniversary, that the department is sort of just starting to get up and going. Do you feel like people are aware that we have a Diversity, Inclusion, Community Relations Department, or are you still sort of getting the word out?
We're still getting the word out. I think that actually, outside of Brookline, we're people more aware of us than actually people in the community. And that's actually one of the reasons why we're looking for that staff person, is to sort of free up some time for myself and Chris to actually be out in the community more, establishing relationships with folks.
Wait, what staff person are you looking for?
It's in the budget, it's a Human Services Specialist position.
Is that—
Yeah.
111. Is that in this budget? Because it, how can—
Assistant Human Services Specialist.
Oh.
Yeah, it's there. Middle of the page.
Yeah, but how can the budget only be going up 1.5% if there's a whole new position in there?
There's a reason.
There is a reason.
Good evening again. So what's actually happening is if you go below that line to the part-time positions, there is the ADA Services Position, that's a part-time position. There's also the Assistant Human Services Specialist. Those will be not staffed in the future. We will take that money, along with some soft money from the Health Department, and to cover a full-time position.
Okay.
So we'll take the couple little parts and make it a whole.
Okay. And you think you can get everything done better this way?
I'll leave that to Lloyd.
Yeah.
Yes, yes. The problem with part-time people doing this work is, part-time people tend to leave, and you train them, and then they go, and they're fantastic, but we need someone with some consistency.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. Any other questions from Dr. Jellino? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next department up is the Planning and Community Development Department. Ms. Steinfeld.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Allison Steinfeld, Planning Director. The proposed budget for the Planning Department is essentially level-funded with one exception, and that exception was made subsequent to the printing of the budget book, but incorporated into the recent forms that the Deputy Town Administrator sent you within the past few days. Specifically, the Town Administrator has proposed creating a new planning position within the Economic Development Division. This position is made possible by a favorable change in the GIC rates, and in response to the growing recognition that we have to expand our capacity for long-term planning. The Division is actually the subject of a warrant article that will amend the zoning, amend the general bylaws to change the name of the Economic Development Division to the Economic Development Division, Economic Development and Long-Term Planning Division. The Town Administrator has also advised that he will be making available up to $9,000 in consulting fees, also not incorporated into the budget book, but these will supplement the $5,000 that are in fact programmed for consulting. That money will be made available if we undertake planning studies for Durgan-Waldo and for Route 9. Right now, we are in FY16 undertaking the River Road Study, and we have, or will be hiring a consultant with FY16 money coupled with block grant money. We will be making a few minor adjustments to personnel, but that's essentially confined to the block grant budget, so I won't raise that.
May I just add to Allison's comments about this position? In my original budget message, I acknowledged a few areas in the town government that I was concerned about, and suggested that if the health insurance rates were more favorable than what we projected, that we could possibly allocate some funds. And in fact, that's what happened, and I proposed this additional position. You know, one of the things that we've been doing, the Economic Development Director herself has been very involved in, is the school planning, which in my vision, in my view, is long-term planning. Very important planning for the town. And as you know, many of the sites that we're looking at have economic development issues, or perhaps other issues, open space planning and other important issues. And so it really became clear to me that economic development is very compatible with long-term planning, and with all the focus on the school planning, I felt it was necessary to add another resource in this area. I think it's important to notice, note that it's a very booming economy right now with development, and this position, I think, can take advantage of some of the public-private partnerships or other grants that may be available in this area to get going on, in improving our capacity for economic development.
So you would anticipate that this person would spend a portion of their time grant-writing?
If necessary. I think the focus will be economic development, to expand and strengthen the tax base, and to provide support to other departments under the direction of the Town Administrator. It will be flexible, as will the existing economic development position. So I certainly do want to acknowledge the Town Administrator's foresight, and thank him for providing an additional staff person. And I also want to reinforce that I honestly believe that providing support to other departments is well within the function of a planning department, and we're very glad to provide that service. And I do think, as evidenced by the Economic Development Director's extraordinary contribution to the Ninth School Study, that we have the expertise to provide that support. So we're anxious to continue to do that.
So there's a lot going on in your area. As Mr. Kleckner alluded to, we have a booming economy around us, which translates into projects in Brookline. Unfortunately, many of the projects are 40B projects, trying to get in under the wire. So can you just tell us a little on how that's impacting your department?
Yes. We are currently at 8.6%, meaning 8.6% of our total housing stock is deemed by the state to be subsidized housing. It's on the subsidized housing inventory, or the SHI. Once we're certified at 10%, then the town may legitimately say no to 40Bs. We can decline, we can deny 40Bs, and developers can go to the state, and that denial will be upheld. But meanwhile, we're at 8.6%. If and when we add the 161 units from residents of South Brookline, we will be at 9.2%. There are currently four projects in various stages of pre-40B. Two have received approval from the state, meaning they have been issued project eligibility letters. Another two are pending those eligibility determinations. If and when all of those four developments actually submit an application to the town for a 40B comprehensive permit, and if and when those units are approved by the Zoning Board of Appeals, we will be at 10 and 1/2%. However, we do not hit the 10% until the state certifies that we are at 10%. So the window stays open until that certification is forthcoming. So my concern is that that window is going to be open for at least six months, probably a year, and we can't close that window until, again, those permits are actually issued and the state certifies them, and the 161 units from residents of South Brookline come back on.
And some of those projects are problematic, I think, from a lot of— And some of those projects are problematic, I think, from a lot of perspectives.
That's why it's a big qualification of if. I mean, obviously, it's very hard for a town not having achieved a threshold to fight the 40Bs, but I do anticipate that we'll be able to make some modifications. How extensive those modifications will be, we'll have to see.
Right. What are some of the other trends you're seeing?
I'm sorry, I just want to, I just want to add one more thing about the 40Bs. As this board knows and many other people in the community have participated in this process going forward to get together a housing production plan. So why don't you tell us how that fit in with what you just said about our being on 8.6%? Try to get us to 10%.
There are, the state establishes three thresholds. One is the 10% SHI. Another is 1.5% of our total property must be considered eligible for residential, industrial, commercial development. Unfortunately, we're not close to that 1.5% threshold and it's very hard to prove. The third threshold is having a certified housing production plan. We are in the process of working with a consultant to prepare a housing production plan, which will identify the needs of the community for affordable housing, identify basic criteria for identifying sites or areas in town that should and could accommodate affordable housing. And once that report is prepared, it will be submitted to you for your approval. Assuming the Board of Selectmen approves it, we will then submit it to the state for its approval. However, assuming the state approves it, we still have to have it certified. It will not be certified until 131 units are delivered and placed on the SHI. And at that point, we are protected for a year. It's 131 units in a certain 12-month period. So it is complicated. We're in the process of preparing the HPP. Any of these new units coming in under the four projects that I discussed would not contribute to the certification because of the timing, assuming they submit for an application prior to the approval of the HPP. So it's all timing. So there are two reasons to undertake the HPP. One, of course, is to hit a threshold and protect the town from undesirable 40Bs. The other is provide guidance for the town in undertaking and supporting the creation of affordable housing. So there's two, those two simultaneous goals. So it's possible the HPP not, may not protect us in terms of the threshold, but it will provide the town guidance on where it would like to support new affordable housing.
Thank you.
Right. And also, I think the town's desire to expand affordable housing goes beyond Chapter 40B. So once we meet the, the 10%, then we can take control back and do affordable housing in the way that we think it should be done, as opposed to the way certain developers think they should, it should be done, like Harvard and Fuller with no setbacks and which I think is outrageous.
Or taking down beautiful old houses that have been here for 100 years.
So.
Could I just expand upon, on one point?
Sure.
Just because at some point we achieve the 10% doesn't mean that we don't have to be diligent in protecting that for two reasons. One is there are still uses, expiring uses that could fall off of the SHI. Obviously, we very, we monitor those uses very carefully and work with the owners of those properties as we did with Wynn and as we will do with Beacon Properties owned by Druker. Also, every 10 years, when the federal census comes out, the total housing stock can change. And that's the denominator. If the denominator goes up, the total percentage can go down. So we, we carefully monitor the SHI.
Selectmen Franco?
So let me just quickly speak to affordable housing and then I've got a question on a different topic. So I, I agree that 10% is important, but I don't want to lose sight of the fact that affordable housing in and of itself is important. And I don't want to fall into a situation where the tail is wagging the dog. My interest is in creating affordable housing that is of high quality and that fits into the goals of this community. My personal problem with 40B, my chief problem with 40B, is it doesn't allow for the town to engage in proactive planning and to set the stage for a project that's well-integrated into the community and provides quality housing that allows anybody to come into Brookline and thrive. End of, end of speech on that topic. I noticed in your performance indicators that the, the hotel excise tax per room is dropping, or is projected to drop in FY17. And that was curious to me because we, from all indications, the hotel business in and around Boston is thriving. There are a number of proactive hotel proposals in Brookline and in Boston. So I'm wondering if I'm missing, misreading the chart or there's some change at the state level coming down to the percentage of excise tax we can collect on rooms?
I wish I had an answer for you. I'm hoping it's a mistake because Red Cab should be coming on as well. So I will have to get back to you on that because I don't understand it.
That's a good answer.
Thank you.
It's an honest answer. Some of the projects going on, do you have any news on Brookline Place and when we can expect things to be happening there?
It's on somewhat of a delay because of complications in Boston.
Right. It's tied up with the Proudie Garden.
Right, something along those lines. They've been.
It was, as I understand it, the, they need permission from the state to, to build additional hospital facilities, which this is being classified as. And it was, and this facility was put in the same application as the new facility in Longwood, in the Longwood Medical Area where they're building on the site of the Proudie Garden, which is quite controversial. So hopefully, that won't tie it up too long since it's a separate project.
I mean, I think the issue, I don't want to put too fine a point on it. I think the issue is the State Department of Public Health has to certify that advancing the billion dollars in development that Children's has, is proposing and has been approved for, isn't going to negatively impact the cost of healthcare. So it's a, it's not so much are the projects good or are they bad? It's what is this going to do to the high cost of healthcare in the metro Boston region?
Obviously, the Economic Development Director is monitoring it carefully.
Right. And Gateway East is moving forward, as far as you know?
I actually did want to speak to you about Gateway East to sort of forewarn you of what we're going to be doing.
Uh-oh.
Gateway East, as you may recall, was sort of stopped for a while because of an interest by the state, the town, and a number of citizens to, to readdress the bicycle and pedestrian accommodations. We are doing that. But it did delay the progress. We're now re-engaging and will be gearing up to get up to 25%. We, there is another major issue with Gateway East and the town is responsible for purchasing property or temporary easements. We cannot even address that issue under state law until we hit the 25%. However, we're very aware that it's going to be significant amount of money. And what we will be doing, the Planning Department will be doing, is recommending to the Board of Selectmen that you allocate a significant portion of our FY17 block grant allocation to Gateway East so that we can be prepared to pay for these easements and property acquisitions. We'll be coming to you in May as part of our public process with the block grant program. We may also discuss with you, or at least raise the issue, of a potential Section 108 loan. That's Section 108 under the block, block grant regulations that would authorize the town to borrow against future block grant allocations. Again, we anticipate we're going to need a significant amount of money to purchase these easements, but we don't know how much because we may not legally discuss this with the owners. The major property that we will have to acquire is part of the Housing Authority land. And that's further complicated because they're under the juris, they have a federal mortgage. So they're involved in federal disposition as we are involved in state acquisition. So it's going to be complicated and probably expensive, but we will be seeking your support to allocate block grant funds, recognizing that there will be other needs that will be unmet.
Do, do we need to, any warrant articles to go to town meeting to do any of this?
Perhaps. If we decide to go 108, we have, we have received approval in the past for a 108, but we would have to look at that again.
No, I'm thinking of the, the actual taking and the acceptance of easements.
Probably, oh, we can't purchase property without town meeting approval, so.
Right, so that would be like in a November timeframe or?
It's, it's so hard to predict because we have to hit the 25%. And also, our design costs went up significantly. We've been before you recently requesting a reallocation of 10 years of past remnant money from the block grant to.
Any other comments, questions for Ms. Steinfeld? I think.
Oh, you've made it easy for me. Thank you. And I will get back with you with an answer on that excise tax.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we're moving on to warrant articles. And in connection with each of these warrant articles, we'll be having a public hearing. And these are, we have four warrant articles tonight. They're completely different. So we'll do, we'll hear from the petitioners and then we'll have questions from the board and then we'll take public comment with each of the warrant articles. So the first article up is the Roland Hayes Resolution, and that's Article 19.
Good evening.
Mr. Daves.
I'm, I'm Rob Daves. I'm a town meeting member and co-chair with Barbara Brown on the Hidden Brookline Roland Hayes Committee.
You've heard who I am. The committee was founded 10 years ago to bring to light the history of slavery and freedom in our town because it's important to recognize both the things that have been painful that are part of our history locally and nationally, as well as the things that give us pride. And tonight, we've come to talk to you about what is giving us pride. But just to remind you briefly, in the past, we put a plaque in front of the cemetery to honor those who had never been honored during their lifetimes, which is at least 10 enslaved men, women, and child who were buried in the old burying ground. It is now part of the grade three curriculum in Brookline. It is a required unit that the Social Studies Department initiated. And there was professional development, which we helped on. And then last spring, there have been other things going along as we've been doing this, but last spring, then we had a concert, which I think some of you are at, to honor Roland Hayes. And as one person said, and I'm not bragging, she was telling me, that it was perhaps the most moving concert she had ever been at. And so tonight, we've come here to talk about the extraordinary citizen Roland Hayes, who lived here in town for almost 50 years. And while Rob starts talking, oh, that's her. He says, if you don't want them, I will take them back.
Okay, so I'm going to start off with this. From the red hills of Gordon County, Georgia, Roland Hayes rose up to be one of the world's great singers and carried his melodious voice into the palaces and mansions of kings and queens. This is what Martin Luther King said when he was trying to inspire students, junior high school students in Philadelphia in 1967. And he used a reference to Roland Hayes frequently in such instances. But he was, since 1967, 50 years ago, Roland Hayes was still quite well-known, but it's, that has faded. And here in the town where he lived for more than 50 years, people barely remember him and there's no permanent reference to him at all in this town. And so I think we need to do something about that. So I'm going to just tell you a little bit about Roland Hayes and his place in the world and then Roland Hayes and his, and his place with Brookline, and then talk about our proposal for a plaque. Roland Hayes was born in Georgia on, and to parents who were tenant farmers on the land where his mother Fanny, shown here, was enslaved. And when he, he would sing at the local church. And one day, there was a visiting musician that had a phonograph and he heard Enrico Caruso. And he said, so that opened the heavens for me. The beauty of what could be done with a voice just overwhelmed me. And that set the course for him. He was able to enroll in Fisk University despite having only a fifth-grade education at the age of 18. And they quickly got up to speed academically and he became the star of the Fisk Jubilee Singers. He's the fourth to the left in the left-hand photograph. And they toured the country to raise money for their institution. They were quite well-known by 1911, when this picture on the left was taken. And he came to Boston, or the group did, and he decided to stay here. He, he saw Boston as a place where he could further his art and gain opportunities unavailable in Georgia. He moved his mother into a, a place, a small apartment in Roxbury, where she did laundry for Harvard students. And, and he, he progressed in his art. He became completely a master of the European repertoire. But he also, going back to his heritage, he also included what were called at the time Negro spirituals, African-American spirituals. And he, but he was not offered access to the main venues. In fact, he was an incredibly ambitious and courageous man. He rented the Boston Symphony Hall by himself. He printed tickets and he sold them and he sold it out. And it was by all means a success, but the, but the manager of the Boston Symphony Hall said, Roland, you're not going to make it here. Says, and so he, he left. He, he went to Europe for, to get his fame and to escape racism in this country. And he, he did. He, for the next few years, he traveled Europe. He went to Russia. He, he sang everywhere, but he was incredibly successful in London where he had a commanding performance before the king and queen. And he returned to the United States quite famous. In fact, in the succeeding years, he was one of the highest-paid classical singers in the world. And, and in 1923, just when he returned, the Boston Symphony Orchestra invited him to be the first featured African-American with a major orchestra in the world. And that happened in 1923. And he didn't have to sell the tickets. He was, he was, so, so he, he went on, he went on to have quite a career. But his bigotry didn't stop then. There was an incident in 1924 when he went back to Germany and he sang before it was, was then a pre-Nazi audience. And they were quite upset that there was a black man on stage. And I'm going to just read you a little bit from his autobiography, from his autobiography. He said, "When I entered the concert chamber at the Beethoven Sal, I found myself standing in a flood of light. In front of me, a black-out audience sat unquietly. From the rear, there rolled out a great volley of hisses, which seemed to fill the hall entirely. I was terribly apprehensive, but I took my place in the curve of the piano, closed my eyes, lifted my head into singing position, and stood as still as a statue. I waited moment after moment, perhaps for five or 10 minutes altogether, listening to the ebb and flow of antagonistic sound. I tried to match the determination of my adversaries with quiet invincibility. And after a time, I seemed to actually impress them. No one came to my defense on this occasion, so far as I could hear, but presently, the attack upon me petered out. When the silence came, as it absolutely did at length, the hall was more still than any I had ever sung in. It was so quiet that the hush began to hurt. I conveyed my readiness to my accompanists with the slightest movement of my lips, without turning my head or my body, and began to sing Schubert's Du Beast de Rue, which otherwise would have occurred later in the program. The entry to that song is almost as silent as silence itself. The German text, stealing out of my mouth, sustained, in sustained peonismo, seemed to win my hostile audience over." And I just, if you can hear this, this is a little bit of it right here. I'm sorry, don't want to do that. I'm not going to be able to do this. Now I'm trying to hit the button there. No, it says codec unavailable. I know what that is. It may not.
I don't think it's going to work, Rob.
It's not going to work on this. Anyway, so I had just a little clip so you can hear his amazing, his amazing. his amazing, his amazing voice. But anyway, the point is, is that he was a courageous person. He wrote color bearers in this country and across the world. And over the next, in 1924, he won the Springard Medal, which is the highest medal given by the NAACP. And he continued to teach and interact with luminaries across the world. He included amongst his friends Dwight Eisenhower, Eleanor Roosevelt, Langston Hughes, Pearl Buck. He was active throughout his life, and a very famous cultural figure. And I was gonna say that one of the signal things that he did is he brought African-American spirituals into the classical repertoire. So when you hear Swing Low Sweet Chariot, and I had another song here that you would recognize immediately, it's, his arrangements to this day that still affect us. And so, but he lived here for 50 years. In 1925, he bought this house. It's near Olmsted Park at the bottom of Allerton Street. And he was, he raised his daughter Afrika with his wife Alzada. Afrika went to Brookline Schools. She was a classmate of Michael Ducacus. Michael knows her well. And she, we've been working with the family on this project, so we see her frequently. And so.
And the family of the house, who own the house now.
But, 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 but what was the, in, on Pill Hill where I live, there are folks there that still remember this family. And in fact, folks that, who went to Lincoln School in the 50s and 60s, remember that children would be, would walk with their teachers from Lincoln School to Roland Hayes' house in June. And he would come out on this porch, and they would sing Happy Birthday to him. That was a, that was an annual event. And then in 1975, there was a concert at, in Roland Hayes' honor at Carnegie Hall, where Langston Hughes, Jackie Robinson, just Leontine Price, everybody sent him congratulations. The High Street Hill Association sent him flowers and a note of congratulations. And then in 1980, excuse me, in, when he was 80, his 80th birthday in 1967, Brookline declared June 3, Roland Hayes Day. And on these very grounds, there was a celebration. There were proclamations read from here and from Georgia. And Roland Hayes responded. He said, "My careers demanded a great deal of travel. When I look at a map of the world, certain cities have significance: Nashville, Chattanooga, Louisville, Boston, London, Paris, Moscow. I was making interesting discoveries about these places and their people. And then in 1925, I discovered Brookline. No other place in the world has been so happy for me." So there have been some recognition. And there's been, there's been a local Roland Hayes Committee. We had a wonderful concert a year ago with Hidden Brookline. But there is no, and there's been, there's been a recent book that was just published. It's quite a hit, in my opinion. It's really a wonderful read about this man. But there's no permanent mention of him in the town where he lived for most of his life. And I think, I think that needs to be addressed. So what we've come up with is, it's a historic district. It's a, it's a private residence. It has to be something that's creative and elegant and fits. And so this, this is what we've, working with various folks in Town Hall and preservation and engineering, up in the upper left, you see that there's, that's a granite post. There are many of those in the neighborhood that sit on corners. So we thought that perhaps we could use that. To set at the corner of the lot, it's about four feet high, and there would be an inset plaque that's actually recessed into the face to protect it. And we've worked with the owners. We have to go through preservation on this. Hidden Brookline and the owners have signed an application for review, which will be reviewed in the next week or so. And, and there are several versions. This is the latest. So I think we're, I think we've got a pretty, pretty good.
Getting closer.
And this is the way it's, will look from the house. So it'll blend in like it's been there forever. The owners do have a hope of putting a small, low stone wall, which would butt up to it. Now it'd further reinforce its utility as a post. And I think it will look like it's been there for quite a while. The plaque itself, here it is, and this is not the final sign-off version. We're thinking of flipping the image to the, of him. But it will have an image that will be carved by a world-renowned sculptor who did the plaque for the Washington Monument recently, that was renovated, the one for, of Ted Williams for the Ted Williams Tunnel. And the text, we have, we have reviewed this with the family. They have signed off on it. And also with Roland Hayes' biographer. So we feel very confident that it's absolutely factual and sensitive to anything that might come up. And I think, oh, and then finally, we need to, after, you know, if we get this resolution passed, it'll bring some attention to this project, and we hope to have a celebration in front of his house.
Sorry. We don't hope to have a celebration. We will have a celebration.
Well, we've already engaged, engaged the author of this book to speak. So the family will be there to unveil the plaque. Donna McElroy, who is a fabulous singer from Berkeley, who is a Fisk University alumnus. I saw her at the BSO a couple of weeks ago with the Fisk Jubilee Singers, is going to be a featured performer. Students from PALS who can recreate some aspect of that connection to Lincoln School will be there. And to finish it off, Roland Hayes' very own great-grandson, who is a Veritone student, classical student, at the New England Conservatory, will sing. So it's, it really, and I would, we'd like to ask the Board of Selectmen to present the resolution. And we think it'll be a momentous occasion.
Wow.
Yeah.
Didn't his grandson sing at the celebration?
He did. He closed the program there, too.
Yeah, it was fabulous.
I have DVDs of that performance, if anybody would like to see it. But it's also on the big website. It's worth watching.
You guys have obviously done a lot of hard work putting this all together. It's wonderful.
Not only hard work, but also very, very good work. I mean, the materials that are in our packet, which I've seen before, I think are very well-written and really, you know, tell people the importance of Roland Hayes. I just might add, he was at Fisk University, and I lived in Nashville, music city, right? What people don't know is that that refers to the Fisk Jubilee Singers who performed throughout Europe and before Queen Victoria and develop a world, and developed for Nashville, the worldwide notion that Nashville was music city because of the Fisk Jubilee Singers. So just a little piece of information.
Thank you for that.
They came to the BSO three weeks ago for 150th performance. But they said that in the 1870s, they had a relationship with Boston on that very stage. So they have quite a history.
Wow.
Yeah. So I, I mean, one thing that I think, you know, this effort does is to really, you know, get people to learn about someone who had a much bigger significance in the music world than I was aware of before, you know, your last program. And, I mean, he's just an incredible person that, you know, it's a shame that people do not, you know, know more about. So we're doing something about it.
If we didn't have Roland Hayes, we might not have had Marion Anderson and Paul Robeson. And actually, he was a mentor to Odetta, who became a folk singer but was originally classically trained, for those of you from my generation.
Wow. So you're asking Town Meeting to pass the resolution. Looks good to me.
Yeah, it looks good. I mean, well, you should see if anyone wants to come in. We could even vote this one, I think, tonight.
Well, first, let me, this is a public hearing, so if there's anyone who wishes to speak to this. Okay, I see none. Selectmen Franco?
So I want to speak to the second resolved clause, which, to paraphrase, encourages the school committee to include the story of Roland Hayes and the music of Roland Hayes in the curriculum. As somebody that went 13 years in the Brookline Public Schools, it was not until two or three years ago that I learned the story of Roland Hayes. So I sort of find this, the second resolved clause particularly important because, you know, everybody in Brookline needs to, needs to know this story. Not only because it gives us so much more appreciation for the town and the rich history that we have, but also it gives us a better appreciation for Brookline's context in the world and its importance in musical theory in particular.
The, we met this earlier this evening with the advisory subcommittee, and they asked us to consider a friendly amendment to one of the resolves.
That one.
And what they asked is, they were a little bit nervous about the reference to the school committee, since the school committee oversees the curriculum but does not choose the curriculum. And so we accepted the friendly amendment to change it to encourage the teaching of Roland Hayes' legacy and music.
So.
And then we switched two clauses around, but that was just copy editing.
And then the other changes, which are minor, is that in the first, the first resolved clause and the second resolve, or the first resolved clause and the second resolved clause will be changed to use the word encouraged, so that all four resolved clauses use that same parallel expression.
Okay, maybe we need to see a clean version.
Yeah. But they were very minor. But the idea that.
I think you have a lot of support. I'll say that.
And we did get support from, Barbara Soto was there. She could only speak for herself, but she expressed support from the school community, of course. But they really need to talk about it and come up with something that they're comfortable, that doesn't make it look that school community is mucking around.
I have actually one other thought about that particular resolved clause. I know, because of my grandchildren, that the kids in Brookline, whatever age they are, during Black History Month and especially on Martin Luther King Day, discuss people who are heroes or heroines of civil rights movement, Martin Luther King and Rosa Parks. And, you know, I think it would be fabulous to have Roland Hayes as a part of that, because he's so much closer to home. And he, you know, his courageous stands, the one you just described, for instance, okay, it was in Germany, but still, I mean, this is something that he's, you know, he's really standing up for the rights of people who had, were oppressed for so long. I think that it would be fabulous if it could be included in that, in that unit as well. That's my thought.
Thank you for the encouragement, especially coming from the former chair of the school committee. With whom I sat on the school committee.
So I think what we'll do is, we'll vote this in a subsequent meeting after Advisory does its wordsmithing. And then perhaps we could join that effort. And I don't think you'll have any problems getting it through this board.
Well, we hope you'll also come on June 12, and that one of you will speak briefly at that, the dedication unveiling of the plaque. And then, as I pass out to all of you, there is a Hidden Brookline Walking Tour sponsored by Brookline Adult and Community Education on April 16, an hour and a half walking tour. We will not be going to Roland Hayes' house because it would take an extra 25 minutes and an extra half mile. And it just wasn't feasible, but we'll talk about him. And we've piloted already with adults. We have a set walking tour for grade three teachers, and they have been taking students on the walking tour themselves. And they also have a DVD to help them prepare for the walking tours if they have forgotten any of the elements from their professional development. It'll be fun. It'll be interesting, and it will be lively. Two of us do it, and we talk about some extraordinary people who lived here in Brookline, among them Roland Hayes, but Ellen Craft. And my favorite hero here in Town Hall is Prince, whose name is on the plaque as you walk into Town Hall. And he was one of the men who marched to fight at the Battle of Lexington on April 19, 1775, a date soon coming.
So not the rock singer?
The wrong century.
No, not the rock singer.
No, not that.
No, not the singer, no.
Not the Prince I know of.
No, not that Prince. And Prince fought with his, the man who believed he owned him, Joshua Boylston. And then two years later, Prince took the Declaration of Independence to heart, and he took his freedom and was never heard from again, though Joshua Boylston put, paid for ads in the newspaper promising a reward. So Prince is one of my heroes for taking freedom upon himself. And it's right down there as you walk into Town Hall.
I just would ask one, or mention one more thing, is that we, we will, Lloyd, of course, we haven't mentioned Lloyd. We're an ad hoc committee under his department. And so we've asked him to help us. And through him, we will be asking the Board of Selectmen for road closure for our dedication ceremony. I suppose that has to be approved here. And you know, just small incidental assistances like that. There won't be, of course, there's no appropriation attached to this, so.
I suspect you won't have any problems with that.
All right. Well, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I apologize to you and to the petitioners who are yet to speak, but I had knee surgery not too long ago. This is the longest I've been out of bed since I had it, and I'm afraid I cannot stay upright any longer.
Well, thank you for your perseverance. Okay, next item is Article 20, which is the resolution on Cuba.
Hi, good evening. My name is Peter Miller. I'm a former Town Meeting member for a good while. And I have to say that during that time, I never had the opportunity or took up the opportunity to introduce an article. So getting a good political education doing this with you. I think one of the recommendations about it is, this should be pretty non-controversial. It's basically an article calling for an end to the embargo that we've all been sort of familiar with over the last week especially. And I think one of the things about the call for the end of the embargo with that, it's pretty, it's pretty well-supported, not only by the kind of liberals who tend to make up the majority in Brookline, but large parts of the conservative movement are in favor of calling for an end to the embargo, too. It just hasn't done what it was supposed to do. And I think that's generally recognized. It's caused a lot of hardships to Cuban people, and it really hasn't, you know, done anything to liberalize the Cuban government. This petition outlines things that are, that are pretty well-known and that have been in the news. It doesn't use a lot of blockade language, although it refers to some of the heinous and difficult pieces of the embargo in that term. It doesn't ask to give back Guantanamo to Cuba. It doesn't call for an end to all the regime change programs, only the illegal covert ones that are undertaken by an agency that's not supposed to be doing that, that kind of thing. I think it can make a major difference in. I think it can make a major difference in Brookline taking a stand like this in terms of being a grassroots voice among a number of localities that are passing resolutions like this. And I'm pleased to, you know, be helpful in working with organizations that are supporting this and in bringing this to Brookline, where it will hopefully be, will show our leadership in, you know, in the metropolitan Boston area by being one of the first to pass this kind of a resolution. So, let me leave it at that, and if there are any questions I could respond to, I'd be pleased to.
Yeah, any questions before I open it up to the public? One thing that hits me, just with some experience with resolutions like this in the past, where some folks get nervous is when you're citing specific bills that, and you're asking town meeting members to express support of those bills when people haven't read those bills. So, you may want to consider, I don't even know, if you end it after the first "therefore", be it resolved, you've kind of made the point. Or you can just use some more general language that, you know, Congress should pass legislation to lift the embargo, rather than citing specific bills, because I think, you know, some people will be turned off by that.
Let me say that these are the most general bills that we refer specifically to both travel and trade.
Yeah, you say that, I haven't read them, and I don't know what's in them. You know, there could be bombs in them that I don't know. Congress is famous for stuff like that. There can be unrelated things. I have no idea what's in those bills.
Okay, I wonder if I can sort of take that under advisement?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And see where this goes with the subcommittee and the advisor committee?
Yeah, please take it under advisement.
And, you know, duly noted.
I suspect you're going to hear that from them.
Let me just say it, I enthusiastically agree with you, and not enthusiastic, I agree with you on that. I support the general idea very strongly, but even though Congress probably hasn't read these bills either, I mean, just on principle, I think we cannot, you know, say that we're supporting things that no one has any chance of not only reading, but even knowing anything about. So, I mean, take it under advisement, but, you know, just know that I also echo Selectman Wyschinski's views on that.
Okay, duly noted, I appreciate it.
This is a public hearing. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this? Ah, sure, I'm sorry. Ms. Frere.
Regina Frere from South Brookline, Precinct 16. I agree with you, Chairman Neil Wyschinski. Bills have notorious ways of having riders attached to them that have irrelevance to whatever. And even if they were a completed act, not just a bill, let alone several bills, we really would probably want to read it very, very carefully to see. And frankly, at the risk of a little bit of elitism, one needs to know how these things actually go, international relations, et cetera, and let alone legislation. So, I do think that it's not a great idea to have the bills. I do agree with you.
So, I guess the thing to think about is, can you make the same point with more, you know, with some general language, rather than specific bill citations? So, that's the thing to think about. Any other? Anyone else want to say anything on this one? I'm going to say, I personally support this, and will vote for a version of this at town meeting. I may, in the Board of Selectmen, abstain, because on this one and perhaps on the other one regarding foreign policy, because I, it's my view that, I don't know if the Board of Selectmen has any specific expertise in foreign policy and doesn't, as a body, I don't think, this is my own personal view, add anything to the debate. I think it's a, it's a kind of an item of, what's the word? It's kind of a personal thing that I don't want to, for the board, take a position on this. That's my own view. My colleagues may disagree with that.
I do disagree. I think that it's important for local communities, people who live in our cities and towns, to make their views known to those who set the policy for the country, as well as the state, as well as the cities and towns. So, and I'm behind this. I think that it's a very important idea that we should end this embargo. It was ill-considered to begin with and should be gone as soon as possible. I would agree that citing the specific bills could be an issue. I mean, we don't know what kind of riders that could attach to that, you know, riders about financing health programs or, who knows, you know? So, I would shy away from that part of it. But I do think that it's important that, during climate, we were talking about local action and what local action can achieve. And I think the same principle really applies to something like this, that we need to express ourselves locally. Otherwise, how would our legislators and the people in charge of carrying, making various policies for us and for the country know what we're thinking? So, I think it's important to do that.
Thank you.
I also agree that it's an important article, even though, you know, I'm always hesitant about resolutions like this, where we're asked to basically come down on one side or another on issues where there's a lot of disagreement, and there's no definitive right position and wrong position. I think that with respect to this article, however, it's fairly non-controversial. I mean, it's, you know, the only opposition to this is the opposition that says we ought to continue to have a warlike stance towards Cuba. And, you know, I think that we in Brookline can say that's not our position and can support something like this.
Thank you. Okay, little move. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Next item up is the solar resolution. Mr. Harris?
Thank you. Can I take this laptop that's here? Can I take that off? Can I use my voice?
Sure.
Great.
Yeah, in the future, just send it to us.
Does it have HDMI?
No, it doesn't.
I think I've got that, too. That's VGA, right?
Yeah. Just in the future, just send it to us.
Okay, okay.
You're in charge now.
Moving on up.
Yeah, fantastic. Great. Okay, okay. Yeah, how do I do that? I thought I was there already. Full screen mode, maybe? Yeah. Oops, except I need the thing on the side there. Yeah, I guess that's what I have. Okay, my name is John Harris, town meeting member, precinct eight, and the petitioner of warrant Article 21, which is a resolution in support of a very robust solar electricity or photovoltaic industry in Massachusetts. Basically, just to give a few numbers and a few facts, and it's easy to just get swamped in a thousand numbers, but I've found some that give a real good snapshot of the issue. Solar, since the passage of the Green Communities Act in 2008, Massachusetts has become one of the leaders in generating electricity through solar or photovoltaics. And basically, it's been an excellent program. There has been huge growth. Right now, for every $1 that's invested in solar, it leads, it yields $2.20 to $2.70 in benefits for people in the state. And basically, what that is, is your basic economic multiplier effect. People who are installing, who have good jobs installing, you know, solar panels, designing them, the rooftops, et cetera, et cetera, spend their money in the state. And so, that's why you get such good yield numbers on that. Solar supports from 12,000 to 15,000 jobs in the state right now, and there have been over 36,000 solar systems installed in Massachusetts. However, basically, the entire project has stalled completely in half of the state and is at risk in the rest. In 175 towns in Massachusetts that are served by National Grid and Unitil, basically, they're the, what's called the net metering caps have been reached. They were actually reached well over a year ago. And so, they're, basically, what that means is that when a person puts a solar system up, and by the way, you see, it's, note, small solar is exempted, meaning small, single-family house solar is exempted from this. It still gets net metering caps. But that means every project that's on the start, on the top of a warehouse, of a, probably an apartment building, of a factory of any kind, cannot guarantee, because the caps were reached, that means the electric companies are not promising that they will take and pay at a fair rate the extra electricity that these systems generate when they're generating more than they're consuming. So, what that means is that the economics simply do not work. And so, right now, all the projects are on hold essentially in 175 towns, cities and towns in Massachusetts. And the balance of the towns are at risk, including Brookline, by the way, are at risk of reaching the caps very soon, sometime this year, we would think. In addition to that, there's an incentive program called the SREC program that's been on hold for projects of any size throughout the state. And the very smallest projects are just about, it says, will run out this month at the current rate for SREC program. So, as it says, over a billion dollars worth of projects are simply on hold right now. It is absolutely devastating to the solar industry in the state. There are small providers that are laying off staff, mom-and-pop shops, which is a lot of this, laying off staff and seriously at risk of going out of business. And, which is crazy, because photovoltaics or solar electricity benefits everybody, and this is in spite of the ads that you have seen in the Boston Globe, from the utility companies. Basically, you know, I'm sorry that the writing there is so small. It saves on pollution by conventional power, from coal, oil, gas, whatever. It saves investment in transmission lines. PV is best generated close to where it is consumed. So, what that means is that it, most of the PV in Massachusetts would be served by local distribution lines. You know, if I generate too much on my roof, it goes to my next-door neighbor, that kind of thing. And that's completely, what that means, it doesn't put an awful lot of demand on the long-distance transmission lines, which is where all the power comes if it's coming from a large centralized power plant. Number three, reduces the electricity lost over the wires. And again, that's mainly a factor with transmission lines because of the long distances. Saves on the cost of managing power delivery, because basically, it is, the electricity is generated so close to where it's consumed. And finally, on the left-hand column in the pluses, benefits, saves on the cost of meeting carbon and renewable requirements. And we have very rigorous requirements regarding that in the state of Massachusetts. The downsides are really just two. There's the cost, basically, of administering the net metering program, but that's not huge. And then, number two, it lowers the revenue of the utility companies. They would much prefer to have centralized production and long-distance transmission lines to get power to us. Let's see. Okay, our costs if we stop investing in solar. Basically, what that means is we'll continue with the status quo, which really, at this point, means a huge reliance on natural gas. And the chart on the right there shows, we've had two winters in a row. One winter, as you remember, all of a sudden, the price of natural gas went up 30%. Another winter, it went up 20%. Customers didn't get a lot of warning on these things. And the point is that the cost of this is very, very, of natural gas, of fossil fuels, of petroleum products, is very, very volatile, cannot be depended upon. Whereas PV, once you install your PV, your solar panels, companies routinely give a 25- to 30-year warranty. They start producing instantly, as soon as you hook them up. And I have, there are panels that are still producing after 50, 60 years. PV, carbon PV panel number one, I think it was IBM, maybe Bell Labs, I can't remember, is still generating electricity, not nearly as efficiently as it was 60 years ago, but it is still generating electricity. And I think it's very important that we remember that. And the costs, et cetera, are very, very dependable. What will it cost if we stop investing in solar? Well, we could build pipelines. And as we know, there are many proposals out there to build various pipelines. And I will point out that Brookline Town Meeting has already come down very strongly opposed to pipelines bringing in natural gas. And as you know, the pipelines, well, we will get, the fracked gas from Pennsylvania, we will get some of that gas, but an awful lot of it is intended for export. So, we won't get the benefit of that. And then, it says at the bottom, the electricity rates will rise when natural gas prices are tied, in fact, to world prices. Okay, another option, if we stop investing in solar, the Baker administration is very strongly in favor of getting hydro power from Quebec. That's not the worst. It's not nearly as bad as natural gas and the fracked gas and the leaking methane, et cetera, et cetera. There are still implications, not positive implications. One of them being is that the forests that would be inundated to raise the reservoir levels to provide the extra power in fact have negative carbon implications when those trees die and release their carbon. That's number one. Number two, this slide doesn't talk about the controversy, but the plan is to have, to build a new transmission line through the state of New Hampshire, down into Massachusetts. It's called the Northern Tier Line. There is significant resistance to that for many people. It's very controversial in the state of New Hampshire. Questions of where, what will happen when it goes through the White Mountains, et cetera, et cetera. You know, significant environmental implications of that as well. Again, not nearly as bad as natural gas. And just to be frank, you know, Quebec hydro is going to be part of our mix, I think, for a while. Let's see. Okay, this gives some idea of some of the costs of some of these proposed natural gas pipelines. And you can see every single one is in the billions of dollars. And again, the whole point here is that basically, every single one of these projects involves transmission lines. It involves generating electricity way someplace far away in a centralized plant and transmitting it over these large trunk lines, very long distances, the opposite of what PV does. Okay, good solar policy. Again, as I said, net metering. Good solar policy. Again, as I said, net metering, and actually, there was a state body, the Net Metering Task Force, that met for about six or eight months, ending last summer. And the report of that body showed, again, that for every $1 invested in solar electricity, it yielded over, two to three times, really, in benefits, in economic benefits to the area. Solar benefits all ratepayers. It gives, it lowers energy supply prices. It stabilizes energy supply prices. It avoids the need for investment in this new long-distance transmission infrastructure. There is reduced air pollution, et cetera, et cetera. It also creates jobs. I am told that the 12,000 to 15,000 jobs in the solar industry in Massachusetts, that that is the most rapid increase in employment in the state of Massachusetts, whatever, the last decade or something like that. So... Let's see. Good solar policy involves several elements. You'll notice that the ones that are listed here, this warrant article builds on the Selectman's Letter that you folks sent, that Selectman's Climate Action Committee worked on a few months ago. That letter had three bullet points, three central elements. This current resolution increases that to 10 elements. And actually, the reason it does that is that what pro-PV people have realized is that, in negotiations that are going on, what the, what the not-pro-PV side is doing is, okay, if we're going to give on net metering, then we're going to be really hard on the reimbursement rate for net metering. Or if we give on the reimbursement rate, then what we're going to do is allow the SREC, the Solar Renewable Energy Credit Program, to expire, as it has, et cetera. So it's kind of, it's one of those kind of divide-and-conquer strategies. A really good PV policy in the state of Massachusetts involves a whole bunch of different elements. So, let's see. I'm going to disconnect that.
Okay. So you're looking at having us pass a resolution?
It is merely a resolution.
Right.
Yes.
And just looking at the language?
Yeah.
Yeah, I personally am in favor of it. I've
Thank you.
I've invested in a
Fantastic.
In a PV
Oh, great.
roof.
Excellent.
So I'm fully aware of the benefits and
Great.
how net metering works and SRECs and all that stuff.
I really look at this as like a mom and apple pie kind of thing, to tell you the truth. And it's building on, as I said, I mean, Brookline Town Meeting, very strong statement opposed to natural gas pipelines. Also, a very strong statement in favor of, for example, the DPW canopy, to put PV on the roof of that a year or two ago. A very strong statement in favor of aggregation of electrical power by the town. And also, there's a very active community shared solar group in town, Werner Lowy and David Handel, and a few other folks are very involved in that. And it all depends on a very strong photovoltaics industry in Massachusetts.
Just a nit
Ah, okay.
In the "Now therefore be it resolved," I would say that the town meeting on behalf of the people of Brookline
Okay.
And do you want to put all those "send copies to" right in the resolution?
Honestly, let me tell you, that whole "send copies to," if you remember Craig Boland's "Anti-Natural Gas," I pulled this list basically from him one or two town meetings ago. And I've since learned, David LaScogia reminded me, that he has a more targeted list that was talking, I've got Speaker DeLeo and I've got Senate President Stanley Rosenberg. But David LaScogia's list on another document, which I think, David, wasn't that the Selectman's Letter?
Yeah.
Is more targeted
My suggestion would be, pull that language out of the resolution, put it in an explanation, and, you know, we would just send it to all the people that, I don't know if having all those names right in the resolution adds to anything, but I don't feel strongly about that one way or the other.
Okay. You know, it was actually, honestly, it was recommended to me by the petitioner of that said natural gas resolution, because honestly, and it makes sense to me, because again, in a sense, the target, the real target here is the state legislature, you know. And the
Yeah, so maybe there's value that they see
Yeah. I could easily see cutting down the list. I mean, everybody and their brother doesn't need to know, but certainly the relevant people in the state.
Yeah, I would get rid of the federal people, like
Yeah.
the Secretary of Education, Ernest Moya, doesn't need to get the resolution.
You know, he lives in town, right? Did you know he lives in Brookline?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And also, I'd check to see who this person, Colette Honorable, is.
Oh, how'd that happen?
I don't know.
Good, very good.
The other thing more substantive, this is just me, I think you ought to say, instead of the people of Brookline insist, use the word encourage. I think that, you know, that is a more sort of friendly term, you know, to, you know, to use. I just think it would go over much, and it's probably going to be raised by advisory committee if they haven't already seen it.
How about strongly encourage?
Ah.
Strongly encourage is fine.
Good.
You know, insist is a little harsh.
Okay. Again, it's a resolution. They will weigh this more than they'll, you know, yeah.
Yeah, but you don't want to turn people off.
No, agreed.
Could I, I'd just like to make a comment. I think that this is a very important topic. Thank you for raising it. And I do think that this is something that also provides the citizens of Brookline, as well as town meeting members, with education about what these various terms mean. There's so many. It's obviously a language unto itself, this whole industry. But I think it's important to continue this push to educate people so that they understand how important this is. And it really probably is the most important issue of our time, overreaching, because if we don't solve it, the problem of warming of the planet and what the use of our fossil fuels is doing
Yeah.
you know, it endangers our way of life.
Yes.
And I think people need to, are getting that, but I think it helps to continually refer to that and also, and so that people can understand that they can take some action too. They can get, you know, for people who can have that on their roofs, as Neil said, I mean, unfortunately, I can't because I have a slate roof, but
Yeah.
you know, it makes, it's a very important concept. So
Thank you.
thank you for bringing it up.
I appreciate, thank you very much. And I, by the way, the public education part of this is a huge part of this, and there have been several components in that. We've, we have a, I guess I'd call it a public lecture series. A week or two weeks ago, Climate Action Brookline, its monthly meeting, heard from Conservation Law Foundation about Quebec Hydro, and all during Climate Week, which started last night. You know, we had Mara Prentice, a physicist from Harvard, who, by the way, thinks we can run the entire United States economy on renewably generated electricity, wind and solar, everything. She believes, and she's crunched numbers, that we do not need fossil fuels at all. It's really amazing.
That's encouraging.
Yeah.
That's assuming, of course, improvements to storage, because the wind doesn't always blow and the sun doesn't always shine.
You know, there are a lot of variables on that, and there's a slide that I didn't quite, I forgot to bring up, but, you know, there's storage, there's, one of Mara Prentice's main themes was to balance off the times when the sun is shining during the day, and then, so that's your energy source during the day. But then the wind blows, perhaps, you know, say the wind in the Midwest or Texas or whatever, or offshore wind continues to blow at night. Offshore wind, and there's a big campaign in New Bedford in Fall River to be a kind of conduit for offshore wind down there. If that blows, that would blow at night, so the two sources kind of complement each other. So, storage, where there are, you know, issues of the technology, you know, and complementarity of the different sources. And then it's super important that we have a blend of a whole bunch of different sources, so.
Selectman Franco, you've been itching to talk.
I have a, well, first, I agree with everything that Selectman Heller said. I think that solar and PV in general is critically important as we sort of chart the course forward over the next 100 years to preserve and allow us to sort of arrest the damage, the harm we've done to the environment. In that spirit, a friendly suggestion in your second whereas resolved clause, I would be more specific than just saying, urging the general court, the legislature, to enact legislation that robustly supports solar energy in Massachusetts. I would tie it to some more specific goals, and only because opponents, as few as they might be, would be, currently could say, well, yes, this is a robust program. You need a sort of a metric against which to measure.
You know, we debated all of that hugely. And, you know, what I finally decided was, because there are 10 specific aspects in the bullet points here, that I thought kind of defined
So maybe the thing to do is refer, have some reference to the 10 bullet points.
Great.
I'll leave it to you to figure out how to do that.
Okay. Okay.
It can be, it can be simple.
Or you can simply say, you know, increases builds upon current levels of solar generation of electricity. I'm not, I'm not prepared, nor should I be writing the resolution for you. I'm not equipped to do it.
Yeah.
I just, I'm concerned about the, what I think is somewhat ambiguous, supportive, robust program phrase.
Okay. You know, part of this, if you look at the bullet points, some of these, and the ones we thought folks might have some problem with, a few of these cost money, you know. And it's our contention that, for example, number seven, that distribution, upgrading distribution line capacity, because it's all local, it costs an awful lot less than the long-distance transmission lines. But the issue among folks who are not in favor of this is that, is basically the costs they see in implementing all this. Our contention is that everything that is not PV, ultimately, for one reason or another, will cost an awful lot more. So, you know, that was one reason why the resolved itself is not specific, you know. So.
This is a public hearing, and if there's anyone who wishes to speak to this, Mr. LaScogia.
Hello, it's David LaScogia, town meeting member, precinct 11. I'm here, I wanted to take the opportunity to provide a little update on the last action that the Board of Selectmen took, which was to send a letter to the legislature John mentioned. That's, that effort began in December, when the Community Shared Solar Working Group in Brookline, which I co-chair with Werner Lowell, hosted a statewide meeting of community shared advocates in collaboration with the Massachusetts Climate Action Network. It was from that meeting that this, the idea of asking local governments, as Nancy Heller was suggesting, to stand up and be counted regarding this issue came about. And I'm really pleased that Brookline has been part of that effort. Recently, 100 members of the Massachusetts House have signed a letter asking Speaker DeLeo and the conference committee that's working on this net metering legislation to report out the Senate version, which is the better version. The conference committee has met, and Speaker DeLeo has said that he wants the net metering legislation to come forward before the omnibus energy bill. There's a lot of controversy and a lot of effort and a lot of activity, and I think that the voice of Brookline and other communities is definitely helping to move things in the right direction. Thank you.
So I think I get the sense folks here are in favor of this. We're not going to vote it tonight. I suspect you'll, with advisory, they'll be doing some more wordsmithing with you. But, you know, just the tenor of the discussion, you know, I think all of us are in favor of this. So we'll wait for the wordsmithing and we'll see what comes out of that. Okay. So let's move on to Article 22. Mr. Farlow.
My name's Frank Farlow. I'm a precinct four town meeting member and a principal petitioner of this resolution, along with Nancy Gregg, sitting here to my left. The highlighted copy of the resolution that we've provided you is solely for the purpose of the hearing. It is identical to the formal resolution, and it is different only in that the numerous whereas clauses are numbered, just so that we can quickly refer to the resolutions and the back and forth of discussion. And the key phrases have been highlighted so you can quickly see what each whereas clause is about. Most of the trade liberalization during the 1980s and 90s facilitated the movement of goods around the world, everything from plastic toys to commercial aircraft. As multinational corporations achieved success in this area, they shifted their focus onto the ability to move money freely internationally and to move manufacturing operations overseas to exploit cheap labor and materials. At the same time, they began to lobby for rules guaranteeing the profitability of their investments in foreign countries. Their first major success in this regard was NAFTA, which, in addition to now having displaced about 700,000 jobs, US jobs, devotes an entire chapter to guaranteeing foreign profits regardless of government regulations. Subsequent trade agreements have applied the same rules to more nations, and corporate efforts are underway to make them apply throughout the Americas and around the world. Late last year, after six years of negotiations under extreme secrecy, the text of the Trans-Pacific Partnership, or TPP, was released after it was finalized, too late under fast track for Congress to make any changes. The TPP would allow foreign investors to sue partner governments in special international tribunals when they believe a government action has treated their investment unfairly or otherwise interfered with their investment. The judges are private lawyers, and the proceedings are generally closed to the public. The judges' decisions are automatically binding on the governments involved and generally can't be appealed. And there is no requirement that precedent be followed. Tribunal attorneys are allowed to Tribunal attorneys are allowed to rotate between acting as judges and acting as advocates for parties launching suits and there is no requirement for judges to be independent or impartial. This is the Investor to State Dispute Settlement System, ISDS, referred to in whereas seven, which has been the framework of the investment chapter of NAFTA and each of its successor trade agreements, the Chinese, the Korean, and now the proposed TPP. As indicated in whereas's eight and twelve, the hand of multinational corporations would actually be strengthened by the TPP in relation to that of national governments. And in particular, as stated in whereas eight, it would be greatly strengthened in relation to that of the US government. Furthermore, it would make even more job outsourcing likely. Corporations' interpretation of these investment rules establishes a system akin to legalized extortion. Governments can protect their citizens against an environmental or health threat posed by the activities of a foreign investor only if they are willing to pay the investor to remove the threat. Even defending the most frivolous claim, the costs of defending a claim, average eight million dollars, can be beyond the means of many developing countries and merely filing a claim can have a chilling effect on government policymaking. A recent enormous surge in ISDS cases, and by recent I mean during the last three or four years, has intensified opposition from legal scholars. An April 2015 letter signed by leading legal experts including Harvard Law Professor Lawrence Tribe strongly criticizes the TPP's proposed inclusion of ISDS. As I said, the scaffold of the entire investment chapter, warning, quote, "ISDS weakens the rule of law by removing the procedural protections of the legal system and using a system of adjudication with limited accountability and review. It is antithetical to the fair, public, and effective legal system that all Americans expect and deserve." There are a number of other letters of this source quoted in a document that we've presented to you tonight and that you'll get a chance to read before your next session. But I'd like to tell you in closing about just one other that's in that document. The Trans-Pacific Partnership would be the first US trade pact to allow foreign financial firms to challenge domestic financial regulations, including the US of capital controls, before ISDS tribunals posing an unprecedented ISDS threat to US financial stability measures. In a December 2014 letter to the administration, Senator Elizabeth Warren, a member of the Senate Banking Committee, and Senators Tammy Baldwin of Wisconsin and Edward Markey of Massachusetts urged the administration not to include provisions in the TPP, quote, "that could limit the ability of the government to use capital controls," unquote. As I said, it's a big document and we could go on all night, but I'll stop there. Thank you.
Would you like to say something?
Sure, I'll say something. I'll take the first bite. Yeah, it's a topic, it has just, you can go off in so many different directions, but for me, the idea that we would, as Lawrence Tribe has said, we would give over our judicial decision making to some international courts and to, and especially in these, you know, bypass all state and federal courts. It's just, it's just antithetical to what I think of as our, our system, our legal system in this country and I wouldn't want to do it. For that reason alone, I mean, there's a lot of other reasons, but for that reason alone, I would, I would support this and, you know, I think that it, I think the Obama administration has been pretty misguided about where it's going, has been misguided about where it's going on this thing. And so I would hope again that the voices of people in local communities would educate the people who are charged with making this kind of decision and I would urge them to not to support the Trans-Pacific Partnership.
It's so hard, it's, it takes a lot of courage and it's only going to be in a tiny percentage of communities around the country where people are willing to step out and trust their judgment and trust the judgment of people they've elected like, like our representatives in Congress and the quotations that I've just given you from our Congress people. It's not many communities that will make those, that will trust themselves and trust their reps and make public statements on that basis, but certainly our community is one that should be willing to do it.
Yeah, I don't know how I feel about this. I need to read more. There's an article in today's New York Times that's actually interesting and it takes an opposing viewpoint and the headline is NAFTA may have saved many automakers' jobs, auto workers' jobs. And kind of the premise of the article is if it wasn't for Nap, NAFTA, NAFTA, things would have been worse and even though there was a loss of jobs in the American auto industry. You know, I don't know, you know, it just appeared, I just saw it a couple of hours ago, so I have no idea whether, whether it's right or not.
Is it not?
No, no, it's front page. It's a news article. Actually, I haven't seen, it's in the business section. So, and as I said with the Cuba article, I'm going to kind of bifurcate my vote in town meeting from my vote as a selectman. I will probably wind up as a selectman abstaining in the recommendation to town meeting because I certainly don't have anything or any expertise to add to this, to this debate one way or the other. And I don't think the Board of Selectmen should be opining on this, but, you know, individually at town meeting, I may, you know, I will vote one way or the other, I just haven't decided which way yet.
I wanted to say that I fully appreciate the size of the packet that each of you receives on a weekly basis and I, I have to smile in presenting you with a 13-page, small font document to read between this session and your next session. But for each of you who is, who is motivated to learn more about this intrinsically interesting subject, and I know Bernard will be motivated to read it.
Why do you say that?
There is a lot of meat in that document and it's from a source that I biased, though you know I am to be, is a very good source from a, from an organization that was originally a Nader organization and has continued along those lines. It's a very good muckraking, studious organization that gets, gets to the bottom of a lot of factual stuff and it's very, very meaty information in that document.
You know, I'm not an economist, but I did major in economics in college and one thing I learned, if nothing else, is that when people make economic projections, for example, job losses, job gains, and make other conclusions with respect to economic matters, you really have to look behind, you know, their assumptions. You know, what are their assumptions, you know, what are they leaving out, what are they adding in? And, you know, based on that understanding, I read your material and did a little bit of research, including, you know, skimming through the TPP and frankly, I don't think that, you know, all of these issues are as cut and dried as they're presented here. You know, Selectman Woszinski mentioned the New York Times article and, which I also read, read just a little while ago. And, you know, one thing that, you know, sort of stuck, stuck out is the following statement. "The integration of production across countries with complementary labor forces, cheaper workers in Mexico to perform many basic tasks with more highly paid and productive engineers and workers in the United States turned out to play a central role in reviving the auto industry in North America." I think what that's really getting at is the fact that in a modern world, we have a division of labor that, you know, benefits all of us. Some people are going to get hurt, some people are going to benefit. Instead of trying to roll back the clock to an earlier, simpler period, when dealing with trade agreements like this, I think, you know, progressives and Americans generally ought to really insist that their government take aggressive steps, like European nations do to a significant degree, to provide a safety net for those workers who are going to lose out. You can't, you know, you can't stop the loss, but what you can do is, is to provide the type of retraining, you know, which we, which we do do to some degree, any rate, but also income supports that will enable people who, who suffer from the international economic realities to not be hurt. Now, that costs money and that's where, you know, we have the problem. No one wants to spend any money, but, you know, instead of trying to roll back the clock, I think that's, you know, where, you know, our efforts ought to be directed. I guess I can't support this because there's just so many things in here that if you do a little bit of research, turn out not to be as cut and dried as you say. For example, ISDS, that's nothing new. With ISD, our Investor State Dispute Settlement provisions are in trade agreements going back many, many years. The issue with TPP is whether some of the problems that were found in some of those early agreements are addressed in this current agreement. Now, some people say they are, others say they, they haven't been. I don't know because I haven't done that type of research, but, you know, none of these things are as cut and dried as I think is presented here or as it's generally presented in the, you know, political discussion, whether it's from, you know, that guy from New York, whose name shall not be mentioned, or, you know, you know, people on the left. It's always very simplistic and the reality is a lot more complex than that, but it just doesn't fit into so easy, you know, political sloganeering or ideas, so.
You read the 13 pager and I'll read the New York article.
Pardon me?
You read the 13 pager and I'll read the New York Times article.
Okay. I'll actually, I'll do that.
So a lot of the academic literature on the TPP, to the extent that it exists so far, talks about NAFTA and the European Union and Mercosur and some of these other regional trade agreements and the job implications to a point that both Selectman Woszinski and Selectman Green brought up. My cursory reading, and I have a lot more to do in the next week or so, seemed to indicate that, that one of the advantages, one of the pluses of the Trans-Pacific Trade Agreement, the TPP, is protection, greater protection for intellectual property. I'm wondering if you could comment on what you think the impact locally would be if the TPP were to proceed? Would we have greater protection for pharmaceuticals and IT that's an increasingly large industry around Boston and Brookline?
No.
Okay, fair enough.
This is a.
Maybe a more politic response would be, I'll get back to you.
What I'm, what I'm trying to get at is, I'm trying to figure out what the local implication is. I, I respect the point that we've talked a little bit about, about the, the fact that disputes, disagreements won't be adjudicated based on US law or US state law, but in a parallel legal system. I'm just sort of trying to figure out what it means, you know, here in Boston, here in Brookline, should the agreement go forward and if there's a compelling reason not to support it based on the local economic conditions.
This is a public hearing. If there's anyone who wishes to speak on this, now's your time.
Thank you.
Go right ahead. Speak into the mic.
My name is Nancy Gregg, precinct eight. In promoting the Trans-Pacific Partnership, President Obama has veered 180 degrees from his campaign pledge to oppose NAFTA-type trade agreements that had already led to the loss of thousands of American jobs. While one can understand the Obama administration's pivot to China, that this proposed trade agreement may represent, we should not accept a deeply flawed trade deal that amounts to a power grab by multinational corporations. Under the provisions of the Trans-Pacific Partnership, three-person tribunals comprised of corporate attorneys and known by the acronym ISDS are empowered to block the regulations passed by our democratically elected governments. Joseph Stiglitz has warned that the tribunals will undermine at every level our government's efforts to assure product safety, environmental protections, worker rights, et cetera. This is because TPP's tribunals have the authority to block any legislation that a multinational corporation alleges will lower its expected profits. There are no protections from abuse of the system, there is no appeal process. The longtime leader of intel, Andy Grove, warned of the dangers inherent in attending only to immediate corporate profits. He said, quote, "All of us in business have a responsibility to maintain the industrial base on which we depend and the society whose adaptability and stability we have taken for granted," end of quote. Unfortunately, the Trans-Pacific Partnership is not only a threat to our jobs, our environment, and our society, it moves us further in the direction of government of, by, and for multinational corporations. My thought as I was listening to your question about what might be a local implication of the Trans-Pacific Partnership, is apparently anything that Brookline decides to do with regard to plastics in this community could be blocked by multinational corporation indicating that that regulation would interfere with their future profits and we would have no ability to overturn that type of a decision. So we lose power on the local level, on the state level, and on the national level of all the regulations that we have in place that are designed to protect our labor force and our environment. and our environment and our workers and our food safety, right on down the line, the environmental protections that we have in place are endangered by the Trans-Pacific Partnership.
Do you have any cases that support that position? Are you aware of any cases?
There have been cases where, that involve the governments of the United States and Canada, having to do with pipelines, having to do with who's going to be allowed fracking, having, there was a case, I believe, in Mexico, having to do with, was there a local community right to object to the placement of a hazardous waste dump within their vicinity? And they were overruled because the multinational corporation decided that not allowing them to proceed with their plan was going to interfere with their expected profits, despite the fact that the local community had some sort of restriction requiring hazardous waste not to be placed in their community. So there are examples. It is true that the tribunals have existed in the past. When the WikiLeaks from 2012 looked at what was happening with regard to revising the power of these tribunals, there were some modifications that were put in place to deal with the fact that there had been abuses of the tribunals, and subsequently, those protections had been eliminated. So when this document was finally released to the public, all those supposed protections that had been included in the TPP had been eliminated. So it's now just as hazardous as it has ever been, except it's going to be more so because the TPP involves many more multinationals and many more companies and countries than have ever been involved in these trade agreements.
You know, I actually did a little bit of research on that particular issue with respect to overturning regulations, and there are two cases. One, a Mexico case, which you mentioned, which is metalclad, which is universally viewed as an aberration. And then a case after that from Canada, which you may have also mentioned, Methanex, where the tribunal determined that it was inappropriate for them to overturn a local regulation because of the inherent police powers of a sovereign state. And that seems to be the approach that would prevail if any, you know, attempt was made to, for example, overturn our warrant article on plastic bags. But, you know, sovereign states, as well as local governments, have inherent police powers that can't be overturned in tribunals like that. I think that that's, you know, a pretty well-established, you know, rule.
Are you asking about challenges against US policies?
Am I asking?
Or worldwide? Yes.
I think the question was, can these tribunals, investor-state dispute settlement forums overturn local regulations?
Oh, local.
And, you know, the statement was made that, yes, you know, they can, and they can overturn our plastic bag warrant article, for example. And I think that that, based on the case law that I've looked at, that is not the case. And I would be very surprised if that, you know, is something that could happen in any situation involving a state regulation by a sovereign state or a subnational entity like a state.
I don't know that there's any restriction on going as low as municipal governments, but another part, if you're asking about state, state and above, another partial answer to the question is the explanation to the seventh whereas in the, in the resolution itself, where it is stated that this includes cases against natural resource policies, environmental protections, health and safety measures, economic development policies, and more. ISDS tribunals have ordered more than $3.6 billion in compensation to investors under all US FDA's bilateral investment treaties, and more than $34 billion remains impending ISDS claims under these PACs, nearly all of which relate to environmental, energy, financial regulation, public health, land use, and transportation policies. Even when governments win cases, they are often ordered to pay for a share of the tribunal's I'm not sure that was a direct answer to your question, but we got to get it in anyway, Bernard.
Right. Well, I think it's a lot more complex than it's presented even in this blog, you know, it is a blog from Sit Public Citizens, which is a credible source, but it's still a blog. But anyway.
Also, I wanted to mention, incidentally, that much of a point that you made earlier was in reference to job loss, and job loss is a relatively minor aspect of the resolution. I think it is part of two of the wheres. The ISDS system is 80 and 90% of the thrust of this resolution. It is, it is the substitution of a legal system for the legal system that has been worked out by the Anglo-Saxon and Western legal system over a period of what, six centuries or so? And the tribe addresses in the two sentences that we quoted, tribe and many other lawyers in many more sentences than that. And you will see in the page of quotations from lawyers and other high-level, well-qualified thinkers, that there are many, many people who have very strongly objected to this system after much more thought than people like me have been able to devote to it. I should add, incidentally, that the fast-track system, as some of you may know better than I, passed this very conservative House of Representatives by a vote, I think, of 219 to 210. It was very close, even in this Congress. Fast-track made it impossible for Congress to add any amendments to the TPP. That's why no changes can be made in it. TPP would be, would be the source of endless struggle in Congress if it weren't for that. And it isn't, as though these trade agreements have flown through Congress with no opposition. The unions, and not just the leftists in Congress, have been opposed, not just to the TPP, these trade agreements in general, there's been a lot of opposition. Enough of the rant.
Anyone else wish to speak on this? Okay, I don't think we're going to vote on this tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for prompting me to look at some actually very interesting stuff. It is.
Next item is, we have some votes on some warrant articles that we heard last week. These are the pretty straightforward ones that appear every year on the warrant. So I'm going to move that we recommend favorable action on Article One, Measures of Wooden Bark. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Here's your... I'll move favorable, recommendation of favorable action on Article Three, compensating balances. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. I'll move no action on Article Five, unpaid bills. There are none, at least as of yet.
You know one's going to appear tomorrow now that we're voting.
Right. Then we'll have to reconsider. All those in favor of a no-action recommendation, please say aye. Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. And I'm going to move that we recommend favorable action on Article Six, the doubling of property tax exemptions. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. I should have asked if there's any discussion, but I didn't think there would be.
You're safe.
Yeah. And the next item is renewal of a seasonal all kinds alcohol license for the Green Inc. doing business as Vine Wright Grill, Lisa Weisel, manager at 1281 West Roxbury Parkway from April 1, 2016 through January 15, 2017. This comes up every year, I presume.
And as a means of clarification, this is the operator of the clubhouse at the Putterham Golf Course.
Right. And the Police Department has reviewed the application. There is a restriction recommended, that the board not allow beverage cart service in the parking lot, the rotary in front of the clubhouse, or anywhere else customers' motor vehicles are allowed. So should we include that in our vote?
I think you should.
Yeah, okay. Any discussion? Comments? Therefore, I'll move that we renew the seasonal all kinds alcoholic beverage licenses common vichla held by Grill on the Green Inc. I didn't say the name fully when I introduced the item. Doing business as Vine Wright Grill, Lisa Weisel, manager at 1281 West Roxbury Parkway from April 1, 2016 through January 15, 2017, with a restriction that beverage cart service, that beverage cart service not be allowed in the parking lot, the rotary in front of the clubhouse, or anywhere else customers' motor vehicles are allowed. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And the last item on our agenda is the question of approving and executing the May 3, 2016 annual town election warrant. And everyone out there should know that we do have a town election on May 3, and I hope everyone votes. There are some contested elections, especially in the town meeting races, and I do believe there's a contested election for library trustees.
And constable.
And constable. You know, we can't forget about that. There is not a contested election for this board and the school committee.
Or housing authority.
Or housing authority, right. So all those in favor of approving and executing the May 3, 2016 annual town election warrant, please say aye. Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And that concludes our business. Thank you.